It's good to see everybody this evening. Welcome to our October 19th meeting of this Temple Terrace City Council. I'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to remind everybody to please silence your electronic devices and please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, as we gather this evening, we ask you for your blessings on our community. We thank you for this incredible country we live in and are grateful to you for our wonderful community. We ask that you bless and protect our officials and employees as they provide services to our amazing city, bless our citizens, and guide us in your ways. We ask that you protect those that serve in law enforcement and military to protect the freedoms for which you have blessed us with. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So, first item of business tonight is a presentation for the yard of the month. We have Ms. Sharon Gaskin, President of the Temple Terrace Garden Club, will announce the new citywide recognition project Yard of the Month.
Come on up.
Mrs. Gaskin. Here we go. Good evening, ladies. And I'll have you know that I'm not on pins and needles because I'm pretty sure it's not my yard.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Sharon Gaskin. I'm the President of the Garden Club, and I have some very important Garden Club members here with me this evening. We're here to share with you a new project, an initiative that the Garden Club started this year. This is within coordination with our 75th anniversary that I know you all have heard about in the past. You know, 75 years ago, in 1946, a group of ladies came together and formed their first garden club. And their whole purpose was to see beautification occur in this community. So, in the spirit of that, we started a new project this year where we have a committee of young ladies who go around and they look at different yards in Temple Terrace, and each month they award a Yard of the Month to someone in the community. Garden Club members are not eligible, so none of us get to have the sign in our yard, but we certainly want you to know about this, and if you have a yard you think we should be looking at, contact any Garden Club member, and the information will get carried on to the committee. Bev Walters is a member of that committee. She's our Assistant Treasurer. We have Mary Rose Owens with us, Kathy Spalding, a path president, and Dave Spalding, our editor of our newsletter. We're all here to share the good news about this project, and we hope that you'll see the sign in the yards around Temple Terrace all this coming year and know that the Garden Club is still beautifying Temple Terrace.
Great, thank you. So, we don't get to know who it is?
The first month, it was a family on the corner of White Way and Gillette. It was the Greene, Greene family, G-R-E-N-E.
Yeah, beautiful yard.
And then this past month, it was Mr. and Mrs. Welker down on River Hills. And each month, there's a different theme. I know this last month, it was yard art, and the Welkers wanted for yard art. This coming month, I'm not sure, do you remember?
I think it's groomed a yard that's taking care of.
It's landscaping, the overall landscaping for this coming month.
About one for the most different kinds of vines growing.
We could have a month like that, Mayor, where we just honor vines.
Okay.
We have enough of them. There is no doubt about that. So, anyway, thank you very much for your time and be on the lookout.
Well, thank you guys for coming, and it's good to see you here. I mean, we know about you, but I love the fact that you're here and the public gets to hear what you're doing, and so...
And to understand why, if they see a sign in the yard, that that's the Garden Club at work. Yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, our next item of business is a presentation from the Patel Group about their vision for development of the Rollerson Ranch property. Mr. Ash Bagdy is here. He'd like to share Dr. Patel and his vision in regard to an education plan for the Temple Terrace area and how development of the Rollerson Ranch property would enhance his vision. Welcome, Mr. Bagdy.
So, good evening, Mayor Ross, Ms. Donahue, Ms. Abel, Mr. Chambers, and Mr. Schizler. Hope all of you are doing well. My name is Ash. It was a pleasure meeting and speaking with you at the July 20th meeting. I briefly shared Dr. Kiran C. Patel's vision for a for-profit college of trade and technology in Temple Terrace. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you again. I am excited to elaborate on our vision and collaborate with the city of Temple Terrace to bring a state-of-the-art college campus to fruition. The Dr. Kiran C. Patel College of Trade and Technology is a for-profit trade and technical school. We, our goal is to train Temple Terrace residents and Hillsborough County residents, both recent grads and older individuals. As you know, technical trades are in extremely high demand right now, and we, our forecast tells us it will continue to be so for many, many years to come. We expect to offer English as a second language training as well as part of our college, and we'll have evening and day classes. And typically, a program would run between 12 to 18 months. And we'll offer job placement services as well once students graduate from our college. The, we expect initial staffing on launch of 41 individuals. We have done market research. We've talked to consultants. We've been talking to a dean who can join our team. The 41 staffing members would include a school administrator, dean, job counselors, you know, grant procurement, et cetera. So, we expect this team to be 100-plus at full enrollment. So, lots of opportunities for employment in and around Temple Terrace, city of, you know, Hillsborough County. Of course, our goal will be to, you know, focus in on Temple Terrace and the city we have fallen in love with. So, some of our research shows us some of the trades that we'd like to have at the college, and this is a, it's a moving target, but it's, you know, it's based on research. One of them is automotive service technician with EV certification. You know, you, we've all heard of Tesla. Ford just announced four new EV plants. GM said by 2030, 50% of the production will be electric vehicles. So, there's just tremendous amount of movement towards EV, and we want to have, you know, certify people on EV at our college. Automotive collision repair, again, with EV certification. Carpentry and concrete framing, given the booming Tampa Bay and surrounding housing markets, both commercial as well as, you know, homes, commercial as in schools, offices, you know, there's just a tremendous amount of demand for these skills. Example is the construction of our Patel School Campus, right? There's tremendous demand, and we were able to do that, but we did find it hard to find qualified people to do it, although we did complete it on time. Again, we'd like to bring in, you know, do English as a second language training, and we'd like to bring in, we like to use virtual reality to train people to learn different languages. Spanish is an example. And so, this EMMRSMI was started in New Zealand. It's being used by the Air Force Academy, and we'd like to bring it to Temple Terrace as part of our college. Again, the electrician and solar technician, you know, with the number of solar farms that Florida is developing. Again, commercial demand, schools, colleges, offices, housing growth, and national infrastructure. I mean, it's all going to be moving towards solar and moving towards, you know, energy efficiency. Heavy machinery technician, heavy equipment service with EV certification. Tesla just announced a semi-trailer, electric semi-trailer. So, even the heavy equipment is moving towards electric, and we'd like to be, you know, the front runners on that in Temple Terrace. Housing, commercial, national infrastructure. Each of these points hit, hit national infrastructure, housing, commercial demand. HVAC machinery technician with solar certification. As you know, things are moving towards solar rapidly, and we also look at marine technician, marine service with EV certification, ships, boats, everything is moving towards EV as well, so we'd like that as part of our school as well. Plumbing, welding, you know, there's a huge demand for welding, shipbuilding, repairs, commercial building, et cetera. So, so these are some of the trades we'd like to have at our school. The demand, the jobs available is quite mind-boggling. We have about 36,280 openings in, within 25 miles of downtown Tampa today. So, and these are all in the trades of the world, so there's, the demand is exploding for these trades. And we feel that we can contribute significantly to residents of Temple Terrace and surroundings to provide them employment at, at good salaries. The salaries listed are starting salaries, but some of these folks make upwards of $100,000, you know, once they get the experience. So, we'd like to, you know, provide that. We've also hired an architect. Next three slides are, I don't have a presentation, but on the brochure, next three sides are the renderings of the school of the college. So, we got that done. We have a vision for it on that site. And if you go to the page where we have a site plan, we have actually laid it down on the 20 acres to have a trade school, a college, a 40, an office building, and two out parcels. So, that's, that's on the site plan. And we envision it to be 125,000 square feet trade college, and we'll have 436 parking for trade school and about 90 spots for the office building. It'll be a 40,000 square feet office building, and I am talking to a large healthcare organization that wants us to build a simulation lab. So, everything we do is next generation. It's cutting edge. It's, it's the next big thing. So, we want to build a simulation lab in that office building, you know, and the trade school itself is going to be cutting edge. And the two out parcels, we could do a boutique hotel. We could do a restaurant. We could do a travel center, gas station, strip mall. We'd like to collaborate with the city to see what best suits those two out parcels, and we can work together, identify what the city needs, what makes sense, and we'd like to do that, along with the city's, you know, inputs and collaboration. So, we continue to be excited about the 20 acres north of our school campus and feel it will be a perfect home for our college of trade and technology, giving us another significant multimillion-dollar investment opportunity in the city of Temple Terrace. We believe it will be an immense addition and benefit to the Temple Terrace community and providing an array of opportunities, including employment, and home to the number-one college for trade and technology. We truly believe in that. This will be the college in the state of Florida. We look forward to hearing from you about the next steps and to collaborating with the city to make Temple Terrace an engine for extraordinary economic growth and development and growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bagdy. So, council members, normally during presentations, we don't have questions, but it seems to me like this is a pretty important issue, and Mr. Bagdy's not always here. So, are there any questions that we'd like to ask him about this project or about the property that...
Not particularly, but just what would be the next step and any discussions, I think, germane to the whole issue.
With the council's permission, Mr. Bagdy and I have met, city manager and I have discussed, there's been some discussion about this, not in secret, but there's been some discussion before this presentation. I would like your approval. I don't think we need a motion. I just need you to say yes. I'd like to continue those discussions with Mr. Bagdy because it seems like there's a possibility of an arrangement whereby they acquire property that they need, that we own. Then, in exchange, we may be able to resolve our police station dilemma that is so elusive. So, there's some possible scenarios we talked about very preliminarily. I mean, we don't, but I'd like some leeway to continue those discussions, Mr. Stevenson and I, in the hopes of coming back to you with something a little more concrete.
Yeah, like a price, like an offer. Yeah, I mean, the, that's our last piece and our only piece that faces the interstate. And when FDOT makes this little proposed signalization that you see here, that's nicely drawn in here.
Yep.
When that happens, the price of that property is going to go to the roof.
You are right.
So...
I know that. Mr. Bagdy knows that. Dr. Patel knows that.
I want to make sure that everybody knows that we know that.
And Mr. Stevenson knows that.
Okay, well, that's, that, so this discussion, I have no problem with the discussion continuing because I know it'll have to come back for all of us.
Oh, yeah.
So, oh, I mean, without a doubt. So, I have no problem with that continuing, but...
We're having some discussions about a possible police, coming a possible police station that we could then long-term lease back for a period of 30 or 40 years that would revert to ownership. I mean, there's a lot of...
A lot of moving parts.
There's a lot of stuff here, and we all know about the Fowler Avenue access and the price of the property, and they know that, too. I mean, they're businessmen.
Of course, of course. I did not mean...
I'm not sure if I can add, if I, so, you know, we reviewed the appraisal that came back, and so that's taken, that's thrown everything into the appraisal, commercial, the highest zoning, everything, and it still came in at what it came in. So, sure, I mean, 10 years from now, who knows what's worth what, right? So, we are here, we want to invest about 70, $75 million in your city, and we'd like to get, you know, that process going, and we are ready to go because we have the team, we have everything done. So, I'm just looking at interest and if not pivot, you know...
And Mr. Stevenson's pretty savvy with his land ideas, too. So, he's got some ideas also, so, yeah.
I would like to say that, granted, I'm glad we had the opportunity to do this because sometimes these discussions can wither on the vine, and I don't want to see that happen with this one.
Yeah, yeah.
Because this is an opportunity for both sides to really expand and make something out of that vacant land right now, which is pretty much, much, not much more than a dump right now, and put a footprint in Temple Terrace for education that we need to do. I think that you should proceed discussions and see if you can put a deal together and bring it back. I would like to see it go forward.
I think opportunity is the key word in this. I think there's, I mean, what, their vision is wonderful. I mean, it's great. We'd love to have that in our city, and they're going to build it somewhere. I'd rather have them build it here. I also know what the property's worth if, you know, I, but they...
It had to be said.
Yeah. No, 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 no. I think it's an opportunity, I think, that everybody could come away from this a winner. So, we don't, I'd like to continue that, if that's...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good, thank you, Ash. Good to see you again. Thank you, council. So, next item is approval of the October 5th council meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there discussion or correction to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? No nays? Minutes are approved. Next item, a person's wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items listed on the consent agenda. There is a three-minute time limit imposed on all public comments. We do ask that speakers from the public come to the podium, state your name and city of residence. We'd like to assure everybody that public comment, during public comment, all your comments are taken seriously by the city manager, your elected officials, and the staff in attendance. So, are there any members of the public? Currently, I have no requests from anybody. Any members of the public who wish to address the council? Okay. Seeing none, next item is the consent agenda. City manager will explain the items listed on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got four resolutions on consent agenda this evening. I'm going to read through these rather quickly, so... The first is a resolution approving the purchase of one 2021 Ford interceptor utility vehicle under the Charlotte County contract bid award 2021-000541 from Bartow Ford in the amount of $41,967.55. The purchase includes the installation of covert emergency light siren, siren control and public address system to be paid from account 160-1411-521.64-11. Budget of 2022 includes funds available for this purchase. Item number two is a resolution approving the purchase of one Ford 2021 F-150 from Bartow Ford under Charlotte County contract bid award 2021-000541 in the amount of $46,720.11, which includes the installation of the emergency lights, the graphics, and other equipment to outfit the vehicle, to be paid from account 160-421-1421-521.64-11. The resolution also includes the approval of purchase of one WatchGuard 4RE in-car camera system from WatchGuard, which is similar to the rest of the ones that we have in the system right now, in the amount of $5,077.75 to be paid from account 160-1421-521.64-99. Funds available for these purchases are in the 2022 budget. Third resolution is a resolution approving the purchase of four 2021 Ford police interceptor utility vehicles from Bartow Ford under Charlotte County contract bid award 2021-000541 in the amount of $176,321.60. This purchase includes the installation of the emergency lights, the graphics, and necessary equipment to outfit the police vehicles. Payment for these four vehicles and equipment be paid out of account 160-1421-521.64-11. The resolution also includes the approval of the purchase of four WatchGuard 4RE in-car camera systems from WatchGuard in the amount of $20,311 to be paid from account 160-1421-521.64-99. These funds are available in 2022 budget. Last on the consent agenda is a resolution approving the purchase of one 2021 Ford Mustang police vehicle from Bartow Ford under Charlotte County contract bid award 2021-000541 in the amount of $40,147.21, which includes the installation of emergency light sirens control, public address system, all to be paid from account 160-1431-521.64-11. These funds are also available in 2021 budget. That is all for consent.
Mr. Stevenson, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? No nays? Consent agenda is approved. Next item is a resolution approving fiscal year 2022 school grant funding awards. Lynn Smalley from our school support committee will explain. Welcome, Mrs. Smalley.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and council members. As you know, my name is Lynn Smalley, and I'm here tonight representing the school support committee. First, I want to thank you and your confidence in our grant process and the significant increase of funding for this school year. We're excited to have schools ask for money, and we can implement many things as they continue to strive the greatest positive impact on our students. We received 20 grant applications from eight different schools in the fall window. After careful review and discussion by the support committee, and I think Mr. Schizler was there and can tell you, we take this very seriously, we were able to recommend funding for 13 of the 20 requests. The total was $7,887.09. We know that the beginning of this school year, as last year, year before, have been a little crazy for the teachers and the schools, so we have opted to open up the grant application window again, and this way, other grant applications can be submitted. We have provided detailed feedback. Each of us went to the schools we represent and said, "We don't like this, but you could try to tweak it this way." And so, we've tried to give them feedback so that if they didn't get a recommendation for funding, we encourage them to go ahead and reapply. The window is currently open until November 12th, and then we will get together in December at our meeting. We'll review all of them and pass them on to you again. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Smalley. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member, any questions for Mrs. Smalley? Yeah, good. Thank you so much.
All right. The lightning game starts at 7:00.
Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 22 school grant funding awards?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
They just do a great job.
They do. They do a wonderful job.
They beat them up. They really do.
I just want to be invited to Peter Pan Jr., the student production, so can you put that in the requirement?
And Mrs. Bell's sitting out there also. She does a lot of, she's a very integral part of the group, too.
Very good. So, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? No nays? The grants are awarded. Thank you very much, all your members, for all of the work you do. Next item is the first public hearing and first reading of ordinance 1515, adopting 2021 capital improvements sections, schedule of projects update. I will open the public hearing, and Diego Guerra, Guerra, Community Planner 2, is here from the Hillsborough County Planning Commission, will explain. Welcome, sir. Good evening.
Can you bring up the presentation?
Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Diego Guerra, Planning Commission staff. This item is the Planning Commission's review and adoption recommendation of the annual update to the capital improvement section scheduled projects. This is a routine annual update that is required per Chapter 163 of Florida statutes. The review was conducted in accordance with Chapter 163 of Florida statutes, which requires that the schedule be updated on an annual basis. The update would replace the existing schedule found in the comprehensive plan with the schedule in your packets. The update is accomplished by ordinance and does not take the standard plan amendment process. Additionally, plans of other agencies are adopted by reference into the schedule through the existing policy in the capital improvement section. City Planning Commission, city and planning commission staff worked together to identify projects in the capital improvement program that affected adopted levels of service. City staff identified whether those projects eliminated a deficiency, maintained levels of service, or were planned for future growth. City staff also requested that the list of the 10-year transportation projects be incorporated as part of the schedule of projects. For those portions that were city projects within the first five years and specifically affected level of service, those were included in the report analysis and the analysis in this presentation. I also want to add that the ordinance does state that the Metropolitan Planning Organization is stated in the ordinance. However, their name has changed to the Transportation Planning Organization. The reason it's like that in the ordinance is because it is, the MPO in that language is verbatim from your comprehensive plan. In order to change it, it does require a plan amendment to change the MPO to TPO. Ladies and gentlemen, depicted on the slide is a summary of the scheduled projects by program area. There are a total of six program areas which were identified for a total of 158 projects, and the FY '22 through FY '26 funding amount is approximately $38.6 million. In terms of level of service priorities, the majority of project funding, approximately 85%, as seen on the screen, are for repair, replacement, and renovation to maintain levels of service. The remainder of the funding is intended to eliminate deficiencies and for future Planning Commission staff examined the schedule with respect to goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. On the slide, there's a few policies, there are a few policies identified on the slide, however, a full list are included in your packets as well. First, the schedule is consistent with... First, the schedule is consistent with the direction that for level of service priorities, which states that they should be first for repair or replacement of facilities, to eliminate deficiencies, and third for planned future growth. Secondly, the schedule is consistent with the funding criteria identified in the comprehensive plan, both in terms of revenue and timing. Additionally, the Schedule of Projects further several of the infrastructure subelements, including providing quality infrastructure and services to residents and enhancing transportation options. At its 14 September regular meeting, the Planning Commission found the proposed Schedule of Projects consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan and recommend city council to adopt the FY22 through FY26 Capital Improvement Section Schedule of Projects by ordinance. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any comments, questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none. Council members, are there questions for Mr. Guerra? Seeing no questions. Thank you so much, Mr. Guerra. I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, Providing for the Annual Modification and Update to the Capital Improvement Section of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan for the City of Temple Terrace Pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida Statutes by Modifying and Updating the Five-Year Capital Improvement Schedule of Projects for Fiscal Year 2021 through 2022 through 2025 and 2026 in Incorporating the 10-Year Long-Term Improvements for the Multimodal Transportation District for the 2022 through 2031 into the Schedule of Projects, which incorporates by reference per the Comprehensive Plan Cap Policy 1.5.13, Hillsborough County Metropolitan Planning Organizations, MPO, Transportation Improvement Program, TIP, Hillsborough Area Regional Transits Harts Transit Development Plan, TDP, and Hillsborough County Public Schools Facilities Work Program, Providing Severability and Effective Date and Repelling All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Here With.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1515?
I move to approve.
On first reading. On second reading? First.
First reading of ordinance 1515.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there discussion of the motion?
I just want the people who are listening to understand that we don't just pick projects to do, that there's a plan for everything, and this just verifies that we're, you know, I mean, we're not an island. We can't just spend tax money willy-nilly. And so, this is really important, and I know sometimes we kind of, you know, eyes glass over, you have so much to read, and you're like, "Okay, okay, we've already talked about this. We know all these projects." But when you realize what's happening here, that what we said we wanted to do not only fits in our budget, but it fits in a long-term plan, I mean, the citizens should be happy to hear all that. So, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion?
I'm going to add to that. The second and final hearing is going to be on November 2nd, 2020.
I was supposed to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify with a "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? The ordinance is adopted on first reading, and as the clerk says, it will appear for a second reading on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. Next item is a resolution approving the execution of an agreement with ABM Building Services for an HVAC equipment maintenance program. Ray LeBlanc, Public Works Director of Operations and Maintenance, is here to explain. Welcome, Mr. LeBlanc.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm seeking approval for a resolution approving the execution of a three-year professional HVAC maintenance agreement with ABM Building Services in the amount of $79,188 per year. Little background, back in March 2016, the city entered into a professional maintenance agreement with ABM so that ongoing maintenance of new HVAC systems could be maintained at a cost of $78,600 a year. That agreement has run its course. So, in early September, September 1st, 2021, we released a RFP through DemandStar and published the required notices in local newspaper, and we had a bid submitted deadline of September 20th, 2021. The operations department also conducted a mandatory pre-bid meeting on September 7th, and we had several interested vendors show up. Two bids were received sealed by the deadline, one from ABM Building Services and the other from Air Mechanical and Service Corporation. We had a competitive process in the RFP, and the ranking criteria outlined in that, and we had a city selection team review the proposals and ranked ABM as the vendor recommended to be awarded in the agreement. This agreement, if approved, would be for a cost of $79,188 per year for a period of three years from date of execution, and there's two, three-year options to extend it after that. It's similar to the agreement that we just wrapped up with the addition of the Woodmont Clubhouse in this agreement. We have eight different funding sources from building maintenance, all ending in 4641. Fire stations one and two have the same funding source. Staff is recommending approval of this HVAC professional maintenance agreement.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none. Council members, questions for Mr. LeBlanc? Any questions? Okay. Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the execution of the agreement with ABM?
To approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify with a "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? The resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Next item is the first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter One of the Code relating to red light camera special magistrate and lien reduction process. I'll open the public hearing. Ask Deputy City Clerk... Oh, he is here. I didn't see you. Where'd you come from?
Just appeared.
Deputy City Clerk Ernie Mueller is here to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening, is an ordinance...
Sorry. Thank you.
For first reading that amends Chapter One, Article Two, Division Two pertaining to the city's code enforcement board. Does everybody have a copy? Or I brought some copies if you'd like to see. Is that everybody has one? All right. The main purpose of this ordinance is to amend the lien settlement and reduction process, and that was requested by city councils a few weeks ago. And so, and before I go into that specific proposed change, I'd like to go over a few of the other changes that we worked on while we were doing this. At one time, the city enforced red light camera, red light violations through the use of red light cameras. And the code was amended at that time to authorize the use of a special magistrate for the enforcement of red light camera violations, and the code refers to this red light special magistrate in different sections. Since the city is no longer using red light cameras, this proposed ordinance strikes those references to the red light camera special magistrate. Under Section 1-66, Paragraph B, the existing code prohibits the code enforcement board and special magistrates from imposing costs. This provision, we went ahead and struck that provision, which would then allow the board to impose costs if it's determined appropriate. The next section, 1-74, had a paragraph numbering system that was just not consistent with the rest of the division, so I made the changes to make that consistent. So, that brings us to the lien settlement and reduction changes that were requested by city council. The code presently authorizes or gives that authority to the, to the code enforcement board to hear that, and then they make a recommendation to you. Following your direction, the proposed ordinance strikes those references and then creates a new section under 1-72, and that's Paragraph H. And that new process then would delegate the settlement and reduction process to the legal department. Applications for lien reductions and settlements would be submitted to the city clerk, city clerk's office, who will then submit the application along with any lien information to the lien, to the legal department. The legal department would then negotiate a settlement or reduction, taking the following considerations into account: the length of time that the violations were active, any city costs, is the person requesting the lien reduction also the person responsible for the violations, or is the requestor a purchaser trying to correct another person's violations? Are there hardships, financial or otherwise? Is it homestead, non-homestead property? Should there be a full release of lien or just a partial release? And then, there's a new sub-paragraph under Paragraph H that talks about the, what we call the compliance agreement process that has been discussed before. In short, the buyer of a property would enter into a compliance agreement with the city that would provide for the amount of time, or I'm sorry, for the amount of the reduction or settlement once the buyer corrects the violations. The agreement would also set forth the time within which the violations must be corrected in order to get that lien reduction. If the active violations are not corrected by that time, the lien reduction would be considered withdrawn, and the full amount of the lien would remain on the property. Note that liens would continue to accrue until those violations are corrected. And finally, the city manager would sign that compliance agreement on behalf of the city. That is, end of my presentation. I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing one, Mr. Pergorlich. Good evening, sir.
Actually, here is two people tonight, so...
Well, you look like one.
And because of that, I'm a little torn. As a citizen, I believe this ordinance is good and necessary. It, it would be good for both the respondents and the citizens of Temple Terrace. It not only expedites the process, but clarifies and brings transparency to the, to this, to the process, transparency that we don't currently have. No longer will a citizen or respondent have to be less than truthful with us trying to explain and convince 10 people that they deserve a lien reduction. However, I'm also obligated, as the chairman of the code board, to bring to you a suggestion, or rather, a recommendation from the code board. At our last meeting last Wednesday, by a vote of three to two with one member abstaining, I was directed to ask you to consider having the final approval of lien reductions. And again, as a citizen, I'm not in favor of it, but as the chairman of the code board, I'm bringing it to you because I was directed to. Have the final approval of the lien reduction continue to be come to you guys for final approval. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Well, this is public comment, so we probably, we'll call you back up if we get...
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Pergorlich. Are there other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none. Council member, questions for the Assistant City Attorney? Well, I guess it's a little out of the ordinary, but if you have questions for Mr. Pergorlich, we can... Councilmember Abel?
Is there anything that's in place in the language of the ordinance or in the intention of it in order to report on, on what's being decided by the legal department in terms of the lien reductions?
Yes. I apologize for not bringing that up before. The way the code is set, is proposed to you, as is, we would be coming to you with a quarterly report on any action the legal department has taken as far as lien reductions.
And is that something that's going to be written into the ordinance as well, or...
It is actually written into the ordinance. I just forgot to mention that.
Okay. Thank you.
Paragraph four, or Section Four, Paragraph whatever. It's number four. So, I'm sorry. Were you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Councilmember Chambers?
Okay. I'm reading Section 1-73 about the appeal process. Give you a minute to get there.
Yes.
Okay. So, when this was presented to us a couple meetings ago, or last meeting, it was to expedite so the person can get quicker than the one month or something going to code board, then one month going to us. The appeal process is 30 days after the ruling. So, that, was that appeal process in there before?
Yes, it was. That's no change. That's the appeal from the actual determination by the civil, by the code enforcement board that there was a violation and what that amount of fine would be.
Okay. So, does the appeal process apply to the lien reduction settlement?
No. I'm sorry.
Well, if, right now, if the ordinance passes, lien reductions go to legal department. Once it's discussed and determined and decided what that lien reduction would be, if the petitioner doesn't like that, do they have 30 days to appeal that decision?
No, not, that would not fall under 1-73.
Is there any place for the petitioner to appeal a decision?
Not, not as it's written right now.
Okay.
Councilmember Schistler?
Yes. Could you, for the, for the benefit of our listeners also, what is going to be the new process now? Okay? I have a lien. I made the repairs, and I'm all happy with it. You're, the inspectors are happy with it. Okay. But I now owe $60,000. What's going to happen under this new scenario?
They would make application to the city clerk's office, which is the same now. Then, the, that application would come to the legal department. The legal department would gather information from the, you know, different, from the code enforcement department to find out if there's any costs. We would involve, you know, get input from the city manager and also find out if there's any other monies owed to the city. We would then take, consider those different considerations that I talked about, whether we're dealing with, who's making the request, how long this, the violations were out, you know, were active and not complied with, you know, has it been years? Has it been months? How long's it been? Take all those into consideration and then come up with a negotiated settlement with whoever's making the request.
So, what happens if we can't come up with a settlement?
Then, they may not get a, the reduction. We're offering to reduce the, to reduce the amount of that lien.
I understand.
So, if, if it's not as, you know, it'll, they'll have to work with the legal department in the city council, negotiate a settlement.
Well, with council. At what point? You said with the city cap...
I meant city manager.
Okay. 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 All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions?
I do have a question. So, so it sounds like there's kind of a dead end there. If, if they don't like what you've offered them, so he said 60,000, and you've said 30, and they had asked for $100, which has happened. It's either 60,000 now, or you either take it or leave it, right?
Yeah. There's going to be at some point where the negotiation's going to end, and the city's going to say, "This is our offer." I don't know if Ms. Shoshon wants to chime in here at all.
But they'll still, you'll still have to bring it to us, and heaven forbid, we could be convinced to turn it into $100, right?
Well, at this point, there's no appeal process written in to the proposed ordinance. It would begin and end with the legal department and the city manager.
Doesn't come to us.
Well, I thought you said that at the end, it's still going to come to us, just to, you're just, and you're just going to report to us.
Exactly. A report of what's happened.
Every quarter.
Other questions? Good. If there are no other questions, I'll ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance. I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, Amending Chapter One, Article Two, Division Two of the Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances entitled Code Enforcement Board to Remove References to a Red Light Camera Special Magistrate, Delegate the Lien Reduction and Settlement Process to the City's Legal Department, and Make Other Minor Changes Providing for the Repel of Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Here With Providing for Severability and Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance amending Chapter One of the Code?
Appeal for a motion? I move to approve the first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter One of the Code relating to red light camera special magistrate and the lien reduction process.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? No second. Okay, council. So, is there an alternate motion?
Not by me. Somebody who disagrees should...
Okay. So, what's going on here? Let's have some discussion. Council, Mr. Schistler?
Can we discuss my concern?
Well, we, we can, because we're stalemated here on something that we've directed before to be done.
Yes. I think what bothers me about it... I think what bothers me about it the most is that there's no final, final, final say by counsel. And I understand what's going on, I understand the necessity for streamlining the whole process, and I think it should be removed from the code board, okay? And I agree with legal and city manager coming up with the final, with the suggestion, but I still like counsel, the final arbitrator. Even if it's, if it's, it's just another step for visibility and transparency that everybody knows that the buck stops here in this deal, on that type of a thing, okay? I voted against a lot of the ones that just came down recently because they went too far. And I don't, and I think it kept out the, it didn't look like we were really serious in what we were doing. We're going to reduce everything to virtually nothing, why bother having the rules and ordinances in place? So, I would just like some way, shape, or form, and I was listening to the code board meeting the other night, and I agree that there's got to be a transparency. So, this is the first time we've really had the opportunity to discuss it since that initial discussion, but two months ago, when you guys started working on this. So, really, we couldn't do anything else up until now. So, I think we just put in some way, shape, or form, and I'm not sure how to do that at this moment, that there is, there's a, we're the final arbitrator. If they can't come to resolution, then they could bring it to counsel for, you know, final yea or nay. That's just a thought, and that I could support very easily.
Okay. Well, let me respond to that, since I was one of the ones that started this conversation to begin with. So, first of all, part of the reason to try to do this was not just to take it from the code board, it was to try to streamline the process, okay? Well, that doesn't streamline very well if you've got to get on a council agenda. Second of all, everything we do is transparent in public record. There is no secret city, everything we do is public record. Now, when you mean transparency, what you, what I'm hearing is you want to have people to get up here and have public comment. Well, we do all kinds, we do all kinds of stuff as a city. We don't have public comment over payroll, or over workers' comp issues, or over, we don't run the city by public comment. We, I mean, everything we do is transparent. So, this whole notion that it's not transparent, that really means there's still public comment. Well, I'm not sure there should be public comment on somebody's lien reduction. Second of all, one of the other stated goals of this, probably the biggest one, is the compliance agreements, the ability to do compliance agreements for people that don't own the property yet. And they want to come and buy a distressed house in the city. What other cities do is, we went through this before, what other cities do is they come to the city and say, "Look, if I'm going to buy this house at 1223 Oak Street, you know, it's got $150,000 lien on it, what would you take?" The city now would have the ability to say, "Well, if you did this, 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 and you did it within this timeframe, we would take $10,000, $12,000, whatever we would take." Well, then the buyer can say, "Okay, I'm going to buy it," right? Well, these people don't own the property. They're not going to come to the city council meeting in four weeks to make a case before a property that they don't even own. That, so, compliance agreements are out if we're going to make it come to the council for final approval. So, I just think we, and we get a report from them, and this whole idea that there's no appeal, guys, I don't know about, yes, I do know about you, because you get the same emails I do. I get people appealing decisions on garbage cans, right? If they don't like the answer that they get from our city staff, from the city manager, city attorney, you can bet that we're going to hear about it, and we still are the council. We still have the right to say, "Wait a minute."
Do we have a mechanism? Is there a mechanism?
Well, how do we get the mechanism without losing...
No, no, I'm agreeing with you. I'm okay with that. As long as there's a final, if there's an impasse and they can't do anything else, that we still have the, we can still be a final arbitrator.
Well, in part of the discussions, we had, at one point, we've had a lot of different discussions. At one point, we had the city managers, the person, if they don't like what they get from the city attorney, they can appeal to the city manager. Well, city manager didn't like that, and I didn't like it either, because now we put him in the hot seat, and, you know, now everybody's going to him saying, "Oh, they're just being mean to me," or whatever, and now he's, so, I don't know how to get that appeal without, but I'm opposed to everybody having to come to city council, because we've lost the compliance agreement thing if we do that. We, there's no way to do that. These people are not going to say, "Well, okay, I'll come to council in four weeks for property I don't even own." They're not going to do that. That takes out, what we're trying to accomplish here is to get these distressed properties sold. Mr. Chambers, any more questions?
And I totally agree with the distressed properties and people buying properties. The, not complaint, but the person I, a citizen talked to me, that it's our citizens that may have liens because of fencing, or yards, or something. They want to come before a group of people they either elected, or the elected official appointed, not just a staff member, and that was just the complaint I heard. I'm not opposed to that procedure, what you talked about for distressed properties, speed it up, get it done, stuff. That was just an appeal process for our citizens.
The problem with that, though, is you can't have two parallel systems. You can't have one system for a prospective buyer and another for the city, you have to have one system.
I, do we? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
And I'm kind of willing to say, let's let legal look at this and see if that, but again, first and foremost, I'm in agreement with the idea of streamlining, especially for distressed properties being bought. I don't have a problem with that. I just, some of our citizens had a problem with not being heard, and I don't, I don't know what that's like. I also, I know the code board had a discussion, and they voted that it be their, the code board be the final, you know, I think it probably should be the city council if that was a final. Anyway, I don't know, I really have a hard time supporting it the way it's written tonight. I may support it in two weeks, the way it's written, after I think about it and more, after our discussion tonight. That's just my feelings.
Well, we have no motion, so, councilmember Abel?
I'd like to echo some of what I've heard from Mr. Schistler and Mr. Chambers, while also saying that I hear where you're coming from. Transparency and the city's best interest are what we're going for here, and I understand what you're saying about being able to do a compliance agreement, like in the moment, without having to wait for council to do that, because that would, that would get rid of people's ability to get in on that. But right now, the way that the CEB handles it is, anyone can search those minutes, and they can see what the code enforcement board decided about a particular home and its lien. And if it were, if it were reviewed by council, it would be an hour minutes, and it would be easily, easy to do that with. If we got a quarterly report, it would be too, but it would be a little bit less out in the open. I, again, I like the idea of making the process more efficient, I like the process of having legal handle it, but I, I think that I'm leaning toward two ideas. One is the council review, which gives us at least a two-week delay from whenever, whenever their decision is. And the other thing is having the report easily accessible to the public, so that people can see, like, this lien had this much of a reduction, and that's what, what happened. And then that keeps the, not just transparency, but the image of transparency, and I think that's what, what everyone's talking about here, is, is making sure it doesn't look like things, even if they're not, which I don't think they are. It doesn't look like things are being, you know, hidden, that have already, that were initially transparent, or right out in the public, in the public forum. That's all.
Okay. Well, councilmembers, if we make it come before council, we can't have two parallel systems, that's illegal. If we make it come before council for approval, we're pretty much back where we were. We don't have any compliance agreements, that's out the window. The only thing we've done is take it from the code board. So, if that's what you want to do, then we'll send them back to rewrite the ordinance and come back. But I really was trying to drag us into the 21st century, where we have the ability to make compliance agreements with prospective people to buy these distressed properties. We can't do that if they have to come to us for property they don't even own yet. So, we're losing, I mean, if...
In all fairness, in all fairness, excuse me, this is the first time we've really seen the ordinance since it was rewritten, that we could talk about it, okay? So, you know, maybe we're, maybe, maybe we come back to this, and I know Ms. Shoshon wants to say something, but maybe we come back to this in the end, but at this moment, I, I...
Before she talks, I'd like to know, can we table, can we make a motion to review this in two weeks and get, because I have a couple questions to ask more.
You can postpone to a date certain.
Okay.
But I think Mr. Mueller might have a little addition to respond to some of the things that you've brought up.
Sure.
Talk about the transparency issue.
Well, yeah, well, it's kind of, I think it's also been addressed, but remember, with regard to transparency, I'm really not fully grasping the concern in that certainly your legal department's not going to hide anything. There's a public records, you know, the public records law out there makes the document that we would produce, which would be the final negotiation, which would be a payoff letter if the, if the violations are already corrected, that's available by, you know, public record. Likewise, if we do a compliance agreement, that too is available by public record. And we would be providing that quarterly report. So, I just kind of, the transparency issue, I think, is just not there. We already have transparency, thanks to the sunshine law and open records law, public records law.
And if I might, the other thing is, this, this is going to be a relatively simple negotiation. First, people are not necessarily entitled to a lien reduction. The CEB has already imposed a fine, and because of their lack of action, it continues to grow. There's, this is essentially a gratuitous action by the city that we make to people. The lien is a tool to try to get people into compliance. Compliance is our ultimate goal, not, this is not a revenue stream. Also, many contracts are negotiated within the city, and nobody gets to hear the negotiation. The city manager negotiates, Mr. LeBlanc negotiates, the finance department negotiates, we've got contracts all the time. And ultimately, the contract comes before you and the public, but people are not privy to what is said in the negotiation. So, it seems odd to me that suddenly, for a lien reduction, there needs to be this transparency, and everybody wants to hear what's, it would, it seems, what's being said and what's being factored into this. We can certainly give a report every council meeting, if we've done one, there may not even be any, but we can give a council, I can do this during the attorney's report and report at every meeting, instead of every quarter. And so, if you, everybody wants to hear how lien reductions are going, I can do one at every, you know, however many there were, at every single meeting. So, we keep using this word transparency, but I don't really understand how that really factors in. I think what maybe even the code enforcement board really meant was they wanted a little more control to you, not to them, because they're not going to be involved in this. What you're talking about, what, what has been heard at the CEB meetings and that everybody gets to hear it, well, what they've heard is, is that the CEB has, is factoring in things they're not supposed to factor into. They've, in the past, they've imposed a criteria on people asking for a lien reduction that they're not entitled to even ask them to do. That is what we're trying to eliminate happening to people. This is supposed to make it better, not supposed to hide things and make it worse. So, I didn't, I didn't understand what the CEB was really complaining about, and apparently one person abstained, so he must not have understood at all. So, I don't, you know, so really, it boiled down to two to three. So, and the one, and one of the people, I listened to the meeting, one of the people who voted for it initially stated out in the open just the opposite. And then he went and voted for this recommendation, so that made no sense to me either. So, you know, we can certainly postpone this and give you a chance to think about this some more, or make a recommendation to us as to how you would like us to change this particular ordinance.
I have a question.
Councilmember Chambers?
I have a question of some, in the presentation, it mentioned other jurisdictions in the area do it this way. Do we know which jurisdictions those are? How many of our surrounding communities do it this way?
I think Mr. Mueller can certainly speak to what Tampa does, because he's the one who did it for Tampa.
And the county, Plant City, St. Petersburg, any of those places?
I don't know what, I don't know what Plant City does.
I think the county, from, at least as of about a year ago, the county code enforcement director himself negotiated the...
So, it did not go to their board?
No.
Okay.
And I know there's some cities in Pinellas, Dunedin, unless they've changed, since I talked to them, Dunedin did this. Dunedin was written up in the Florida League of Cities magazine for this innovative thing a few years ago, when they came up with the compliance agreements, because they had distressed properties. Now, unless they've changed, I didn't check with them. But at our conference, I did chat with several mayors and council members, although I can't recall now, I didn't make a list, but councilmember, I'm sorry, were you...
I was done.
Okay, councilmember Abel, and then...
I wish I had thought of it, but hearing your suggestion about including that in the, in the city attorney report, whatever the lien reductions were, that's satisfactory for me. I think that that resolves my concerns about it.
Is that...
That's it.
Councilmember Schuster?
What do we do if we hit an impasse? Let's say, and I agree with the, with the compliance issue for distressed properties. That's something that needs to be negotiated with and beforehand. But let's say we hit an impasse, they want $100, and we owe 60,000, and they owe 60,000, and you guys come back with 30, or 15, or whatever be the number. What happens if you, if you hit a complete total impasse with it, under the, under this plan?
Under this plan, if they want to get up during their three minutes and tell you about it, they can do that and speak on regular public comment, but there is no process to appeal. If it was finally determined they would not be appealing to the city manager, there is no appeal, just like if they come to you after CEB, that's it. There's no appeal from there, because there's no, there's no right to have any reduction.
Agreed.
So, so, this is, this is it. And some cities don't even have a code enforcement board, they have one person making the decision. They have a special magistrate who hears all code cases, and that is also who would decide the lien reduction. So, still, only one person. So, I'm sure that in our process, Mr. Mueller and I will both discuss these, it will not be decided by one person. We'll also, our process that we plan on is to discuss it with the code enforcement board and with the city manager.
Code enforcement director.
Or code enforcement director, because we have to get the information from them to know, they know the people the best, to know what the violation was, how long it has existed, what the persons, they've usually talked to the homeowner or property owner, what their issues, special issues are sometimes, and obviously, we would talk to the person who's made the application themselves. But as I said, we're not trying to make money from this, but certainly, we want the city's costs all covered, and if this has gone on for years, and it's the person who caused the violation, we would be less inclined to give that $100 reduction, you know, but I've perfectly understood when the code enforcement board imposed a dollar on a lady, there was good reason for that, and there was a hardship, and the legal department is people, just like the code enforcement board. So, I don't understand this feeling of distrust that I'm hearing. But I'm not looking for more work either, so don't think that I'm, I feel proprietary about any of this, so...
I don't think I distrust with the individuals involved, not at all, but if there's, if there, if there's somebody on the street, we're the ultimately responsible for everything that occurs. And if what the city manager negotiates a contract, and it's a bad contract, we're ultimately responsible for everything... ultimately responsible for everything that, that comes down the pike, in the eyes of our, in the eyes of our constituents. And they, this is their city, okay? We're, we're just, we're just lucky enough to sit up here for a given period of time and help to, to manage it and run it. So it has nothing to do with you, or nothing to do with Mr. Mueller. You guys aren't going to be here forever, okay? And in, in all likelihood, so, you know, it's, it's when we're walking in and out of Publix that, hey, God, guys, lady down the street couldn't, couldn't work out a lien reduction, and she's lost her house, or whatever be the case. Or, you know, I, I do agree with the, with the distressed properties, there's, this works well for that. And I'm not advocating a dual system, because you, you're right, it wouldn't work, it'd be a disaster, it would never work. All I'm asking for is, if there's, if you guys just can't reach an, you reach an impasse, and I don't, the distressed properties, I'm sorry, you're buying the property knowing what's going on, okay? So caveat emptor on that, okay? But people who live here and who've been here for a long time, and they run into whatever be the hardship, if you can't reach a, a, an amicable settlement, given the criteria that you're working under, and it may never happen, but at least there's that final, final option to, to appeal to, to, to us, because we're the ones, we're the ones going to have to answer for it, to, to, to their neighbors and so forth, and we're, this does play an impact down in the city. I really believe it would.
If, if you want it to come to you for a final approval, or if you want to be not the final approval, so that you're not hearing everyone-
Exactly, I don't want that.
But at least, if you want to be the appeal, this would have, the public needs to understand, they don't get to get up and comment, this is not a public comment type of a matter, and you would be acting as a quasi judicial person, which means you shouldn't be getting input from the community on an individual's lien. If you want to hear the lien as, they're not happy, they want to appeal it to you, that's fine, but you cannot be hearing from the whole neighborhood at Publix about it.
Well, we wouldn't hear about it until after the fact, but I agree with-
No, I mean, you might hear about it, I mean, with it, they can't make it, they can't make an agreement with the legal department, so they want to come to you for the appeal. That could be an option, but you don't get to listen to the whole neighborhood at Publix before you make your decision on it. So that's what I'm saying.
I just want to comment on the part that concerns the compliance agreements, which, that's, to me, that's a big part of this. This is the part of this that I'm trying desperately to hold on to. And I had to say, I don't, I hope I say this politely, I don't mean to be argumentative, but the whole idea that investors buy distressed properties, or people buying distressed properties, well, it's too bad on them. They know what the lien is when they buy the property so tough. I, I reject that. I, I, that does not serve our city well.
Okay, okay.
Because if you live next door to a distressed property that's got a $200,000 lien on it, and it's worth 40 grand, it's worth 100 grand, it's going to sit there for year after year after year, and these people that are buying these places to fix them up, and I know investor's a dirty word, but these people that are buying them to fix them up, they're not coming here because they got to come to the code board and convince seven people, right, who ask them crazy questions sometimes about what color they're going to paint it, what color, what kind of appliances are they going to put in there? And then they've got to come to us, and sometimes, we're not much better, you know, I mean, I don't mean any disrespect, but sometimes we get caught up in that too, and we're asking stuff that's really not relevant to, to the situation. So I, I just reject the idea that, well, you're an investor tough. Well, that doesn't serve the neighborhood any good if we make it harder for those properties to transfer to new people and get rehabbed. That's, that's not doing a good service to the people in our community, I don't think. I, I don't, I don't buy that.
Maybe I didn't say that properly. If you come in, and, and I thoroughly agree with the distressed property issue, but if you come in and say, all right, I got a $60,000 lien, I'm going to do this, and you guys agree to a $30,000 deal, and that's, that's what the, or a $5,000, whatever it's going to be, okay? They don't get an appeal on that, because they've already done it, they've already negotiated before they bought, they know what they're walking into, all right? And that, that's where my caveat emptor is coming, not, not, I don't want the neighborhoods to go down, I want those properties acquired and fixed up. Whatever they negotiate, they negotiate, but a long-term citizen could have, to me, should have an opportunity to appeal. That's all I'm saying. I, I agree wholeheartedly. If we have a huge, a huge lien on, on a piece of property, and you're never going to sell it if you don't reduce it, wholeheart, I agree with that completely. We need to get that reduced, and that's a perfect opportunity to do the pre-negotiation before the compliance is actually done.
But you can't have two systems.
Would that create a second system?
You can't have two systems, you've got to have one system. Everybody gets equal treatment under the law, it can't be two systems. It can't be one system for residents, and one system for landlords, and one system for, you can't do that, it's got to be the same for everybody.
I, I have one more question, that's that.
And we need to probably move on.
Yeah, and we need to move, move on, and I'm ready to do that. Did, was there any revelation in that conversation you just had?
Did we hush him?
Yes. Was there a suggestion that might help the situation?
Right, with the clarification that if we vote one year-
Would it help us make a decision?
I, I always think that helps.
Okay, well, we'll talk about that.
Let's keep it short, because we do-
Can we take a vote on that?
We do need to move on.
Well, the, the only thing we were discussing is that it's a negotiation, okay? It's two people sitting down and negotiating a settlement for something they have no right to to begin with. They will come to an agreement, because it's a negotiation. There will be give and take, there will be offers and counteroffers, they will walk away with an agreement. And the way it stands now, it happens at the code board meeting, we come to you, we make the, we make a suggestion to you about what we came up with, they don't get an appeal. If they don't like it, too bad, it goes back to the, it's, it's, it's either take the offer or pay the original. Okay? That's, 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 that's the way it works. In this particular process, it's way better, because they can sit down and have a back-and-forth with, with one of both of these people, and you're, you're losing the, the, the whole ball of wax idea, where as a code board, we can't discuss outstanding water bills, we can't discuss red tag fees, okay? The attorneys can, they can put the whole ball of wax together and come up with a package that settles the whole ball of wax, that settles everything. And like, like the mayor suggested, if someone doesn't like what happened, if, if, we have never had anybody appeal a lien reduction, ever, that I'm aware of, okay? We've never, it's never happened, because they know, if they don't like what they got, it goes back to the original, okay? So in the off-chance that somebody doesn't like what happened, that they still think that they, $100 is the right number, you're going to hear about it, and you're going to find out from, from, from your legal department that that's what's going on. By the way, we had one person in, in 100 years that, that decided that they were going to appeal a lien reduction that they're not entitled to. So this whole idea that somehow you guys aren't, you know, because you're not coming in front of you, I, I just, it, it destroys the whole idea of fixing the problem, of expediting the process, and make, at, at the end of the day, it's actually better for the citizenry, because these distressed properties may get sold faster, it's better for the citizenry, because now they're just sitting down with one person, it gets done faster. And we have never, ever, never, never, ever, never, had an appeal to a decision. It's a negotiation, the whole, the, 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 the whole premise of a negotiation is back-and-forth, and everybody leaves, maybe not happy, but they agree. So I don't know what, I, I just, I'm confused about what, why you think that it has to come back in front of you. I, I'm really truly confused by that.
Thank you.
And I was confused when it was brought up to me at the code board meeting.
Thank you for answering my question.
Thank you.
Okay, so, council week, I, okay, we, we got to draw, we got to land this plane here.
I want to make a motion, yeah.
Okay, well, we have to do one of a few, we have to approve this, change it, postpone it, or not approve it, one or the other, so.
Go for something.
I, I'd like to make a motion to approve it with the inclusion of it in the city attorney's report.
At every meeting.
I'll second.
At every meeting.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Discussion on the motion?
I'm just glad we had a chance to discuss the whole thing.
Yes.
First time we've had to discuss as a body to answer our questions, that everybody gets the same answer and the same question asked.
You have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there other discussion on the motion?
If you'd like, I think with what you have left on the calendar, I can make that change and have it before you tonight.
Okay, well, the only change is section four, instead of the-
It'll be, it'll be reported on during the city attorney's-
Okay, can we just enter that change in the record and be done? Or do we have to have another, open this hearing back up? Can't we just make that? Yes.
Yes, you can make, the motion as was made and seconded, you can vote on that, and by the time we have the second reading, you will have-
All right, we'll have it-
Yeah, yeah, number four is just a lien, the legal department will provide a report to city council at every-
Yes.
Okay, motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Motion passes on first reading. Ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Next item is a resolution approving EMS transport fee modification. Fire chief, our one and only fire chief, Ian Kemp, will present. Good evening, chiefs, good to see you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Ian Kemp, Fire Chief.
Our one and only mayor.
For you tonight is a resolution approving EMS transport fee modifications. The Fire Department recently completed an EMS billing rate survey. After reviewing the data associated with this survey, the Fire Department staff is recommending a fee schedule change. The current fee schedule was last modified in 2017. Since the city began providing EMS transport services, surveys have been completed periodically to ensure the rates remain consistent with surrounding jurisdictions and best practices. Each agency's approach to fee schedule and rates is different. You will notice a variation in charges for interventions and service levels. Since the beginning of EMS transport program in Temple Terrace, our fee schedule has always provided a resident transport fee discount of $50 as described in the comparison rate survey. The proposed EMS fee schedule modification brings the city of Temple Terrace transport rates in line with those agencies providing the same services. It is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing implementation of a newly revised EMS schedule of fees as proposed with effective date of December 1st, 2021.
Thank you, chief. Other members of the public wish to comment on this item? Councilmember questions?
One.
Councilmember Abel.
So sometimes insurance companies have a fee schedule, like they'll pay a certain amount, and I was wondering, how, how do insurance, how does insurance interact with your fee schedule normally?
Yeah, great question. It can get very confusing. So Medicare and Medicaid, they pay a certain amount, and that's, that's all they pay, and we do not, we do not then bill the, the patient for that. So regardless of what our amount, we could charge $2,000. If Medicare and Medicaid's only paying 300, that's, that's all the city will, will get. Insurance is a little different, they usually pay a little bit more, and then we take whatever, whatever that amount is. If you're self-paid, then of course you need to pay the, the whole amount. Some of that, the Medicare, Medicare, Medicaid, some of that is getting reimbursed after the Florida Fire Chiefs, some of the stuff, the PMT monies that comes back to the city when we have to put up money, that's actually money coming back from Medicaid. So I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, it does. Just to clarify, though, if, if my insurance pays $500 for an ambulance ride, and the charge is $800, will I have to pay the, that remainder?
We take, we take the insurance, whatever the insurance amount is.
Understood, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Other questions, councilmembers? If not, is there a motion authorizing implementation of the revised EMS schedule of fees?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, do you have something?
No, I would just say that when they come to pick you up and take you, you'll pay anything.
All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, everyone.
Next item on the agenda is the consideration for these patient folks of development proposals submitted for 8447 North 56th Street in the downtown redevelopment area. Mr. Stevenson, Ms. Shon, I could use a little guidance on how to do this, do we need to go through these presentations again, in, because now we're in a new meeting, or? I'm looking for, I don't know which one to ask.
Well, there have been changes.
I, I give you traditionally, what we've done is just give you kind of a, just a brief summary of the, of the projects or proposals that you've moved forward. So with that, if you can give Patrick, Mr. Berman, just a few minutes to kind of recoup-
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, if you-
Wasn't at, wasn't, you know, listening to the CRA meeting.
Okay.
That would certainly provide a little bit of background for the public audience right now.
Okay, very good. Does that sound good? Welcome, Mr. Berman.
Good evening, good evening. Nice to be back. So we have two buyers with us tonight interested in purchasing the south parcel, which is the Curry Bowl Restaurant Parcel, 1.74 acres of land, zone commercial. And the, the first offer came in at $700,000, that's U.S. American Properties. They offered a $700,000 cash with a quick closing, a 30-day inspection period and a 30-day closing period, so 60 days, from start to finish, which is very attractive terms. Principal, it lives here in Temple Terrace and also owns property in Temple Terrace, as well as a number of other businesses and real estate assets, so very qualified buyer, highly qualified buyer. The next group we have is Enigma Events, which is the owner of the 25,000 square foot building to the north, adjacent north. They own that building, they're under construction right now, making improvements to that structure, and they'd like to buy the southern parcel and put together the two pieces to make a unified development plan. So one, the, one offer was a simplistic, a simple deal, six months from contract to closing, basically to redevelop the property with a retail strip center, with commercial uses, medical, restaurant, office. And the other one was a more complex plan, it would require a lot more time, about a year at least, to close the deal, and this is a hotel with apartments above and commercial space, so much larger, more expensive development, which would create more tax revenue for the city. So both plans have merit, both buyers are qualified and have an interest in the city of Temple Terrace and have assets in the city, and both, I believe, are worthy to be heard and make their proposal to you directly. Didn't know if I should provide more detail, happy to provide more detail on each offer if you'd like, that's all right?
I'd, we need more detail right now, do we?
No.
Say, I think Mr. Hamad is here for the first offer, if you would like to present-
All right, so, we have, okay. Now, procedurally here, I know we heard from the applicants or the prospective buyers at our previous meeting, procedurally here, Ms. Shon, do we need to redo that, because we have potentially a different audience watching now?
I, I think that you can do a Reader's Digest version, you may have a different audience, but it, the first meeting was noticed and published, and so if someone wanted to hear it all, they should have been listening at 5:00 or been here at 5:00.
We should give them each a smaller period of time to-
Right. Correct.
Very good. Okay, U.S. American Properties is first, then.
Yep. Is there a time limit, or?
Would you, Cheryl, would you set this for five minutes, please? If, if we cause it to run over, we'll make that up.
Right.
Okay, I just want to correct Patrick. He said 700,000, we have increased it, he submitted a million dollars. So he just, he never mentioned the million, so it's a million dollars proposal. As I mentioned earlier, it's going to be two plan, we prefer Plan A, but if it doesn't work, we're going to go to Plan B. And Plan B is going to have like a, a small mix with it, since we're going to build the mix or the restaurant. A Plan A, if we cannot use it, then we're going to build with the mixed use, like a clubhouse with a restaurant in it. It's like an event, plus probably going to take half of that building, or maybe three, quarter of that building, to do like a restaurant, clubhouse type. So we prefer number one. If it doesn't work, then we're going to go to number three. And we don't know, I mean, we're going to work close with the city- And we don't know, I mean, we're going to work close with the city of Temple Terrace and see what we're going to come up with, so.
Like one question is that at our last meeting, when you upped your offer to a million dollars, you asked for a five-year property tax deferral.
Yes, this is at least will give us, because there's lots of money we have to spend, especially for that property, to redevelop the whole property, actually, there's so much trees, there's so much curbs, there's so much low land somewhere. So it's going to take a lot of money really to redevelop that property. So we took in consideration to sit back and start generating some money. That five years will put us back hopefully and we'll be strong enough to last for a long time. Yeah, because we're not here to redevelop something for a year or two or five. We're going to be there forever, hopefully, who knows? But as long as we have life and we have a blood going, we can stay there. So that's exactly what he mentioned to me and his going to inherit it to his generation, his son and la, 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 whatever, so.
Okay, so thank you, so well, hold on a second, I think what we would be best, I'm not sure this is right out of parliamentary procedure, but this is, gets a little weird here. I think what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you guys, is to let him make his presentation, let the other prospective buyer make their presentation, then we have public comment and then we have questions, okay?
Any question?
No, not right now, but maybe, thank you, if you'd reset the timer to five minutes. Mr. Singh, welcome back.
Good evening, everybody, again. We are here to present the two proposals. The first proposal is a million and $11,000. The proposal is to make a similar, similar structure, similar development on the, on the south parcel. It will look, both the parcels will look similar. We will have cross-access in the parking, issues will be resolved. The, the storefronts on all four sides of the north parcel will be now possible. And I'll go ahead to finish off. At the same time, people, public would be able to cross-access, park on either side of the parcel and, and walk around. With that, we don't need any, any assistance from the city. We willing to pay the taxes, we willing to pay all the tree mitigation. We are willing to pay whatever the permit fees are and everything. And we have another parcel, we have the second offer, which is $925,000 for the big development. That development is about 200,000 square feet of total buildable areas, where we'll have a, a commercial residential downtown effect development with a small hotel and a parking and an events center. And also it would have strip mall all the way below. The option one and two, I mean, the north and south parcel will be now combined in, where people can park around. It would be a downtown where people can walk in the night, it would add to the city where when we go to other cities like Orlando or somewhere, we have different spots. It is not only one spot we, we go to, we go to Disney, we go to Universal Studio, they're downtown there. So every day is a new thing, we very close to Busch Garden. This downtown effect would now promote people to come here, okay, we have restaurants here, we have a place to walk around, there's Starbucks nearby, so it just adds up to the whole downtown effect. We are asking for city's assistance in tax reductions and all the five things what we discussed before.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, councilmember questions for, well, anybody, questions? Councilmember Chambers.
Since, this is for legal or city manager. Tonight, we really are considering the original amounts that were in the proposal or bid packet. We can't consider anything brought up at the podium in pricing, correct?
However, it seems that they've amended, they've both amended their proposals. So if you want them to resubmit something in writing, you can do that. But I don't see any reason why you can't consider this since they've both gotten up and made an amendment to their proposals.
And any action we would take tonight would simply be to direct staff to further.
Correct.
Reach an agreement, so it wouldn't like, be like we're signing a contract tonight anyways.
No.
Okay. That's a good question, though, I was wondering that too.
Okay, and a question about the tax reduction for both groups. Do both groups understand that they, we can only deduct our millage, that the rest of the money that's paid by Port Authority and Hillsborough County and all that would still happen? Do both parties understand that?
Yes.
Okay, and as we understand that we get TIF money from the county? So we're not getting nothing. Well, if we waive our taxes, I'm just saying, if we waive our millage, we're still getting money for that property from our TIF. Correct?
Well, I don't know about that.
I don't know either.
I don't know about that.
No, because we get what, we get what was paid.
Yeah.
And we get to keep it. That's the TIF, whatever was paid in, we, we get to keep it.
Yeah, we don't get money from the county, they just pass through the money that they would normally have kept.
So we've got less money, we would.
What do they normally keep?
Their port, their part of the, their portion of the ad valorem, their assessment.
It would be about seven mils a year. So we still would get county money, what they paid in county taxes.
I don't know, I'm unclear about how that would work. I don't.
Okay, so we don't know the answer, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm unclear about that.
Okay.
Our first proposal doesn't have any tax deduction.
Correct.
We understand, yeah.
Okay. Councilmembers, Mr.?
I have some concerns with, with, with all three of the offers, to be specific. With the American project, the U.S. America project, I'm okay with the, the price and the plan and everything. I do, I am concerned with the, with the tax incentive, that, that's a problem. It's only 50,000 a year, give or take, but it's still 50,000 a year. With the Enigma project, I have real concerns with the ability to perform, given the length of time that the existing project has been delayed. Given COVID, everything else, and I understand, I stand all the, I understand all the issues. But with, with the hotel, we're looking at five years potentially before it's completed. And with the, with the other project or with, with Plan A, we still have the length of, there's still the delays. If I, if I did my math correctly, it was like a year and a half before you even start building, okay? Hold on, hold on, let me finish. With the length of time it's taken to get as far as you're, as far as you are now, with the other, with the north property, we're trying to get it redeveloped, we don't want to exacerbate the situation down there any, any longer than we have to. So that's, that's my concern, that's two of my concerns, that's my questions regarding that. So I hit you first, would you, would, you know.
Okay.
Please, yeah, you guys, in order to get on the record, we need you guys to, thank you.
Yeah, in regard to the, to the extension or in regard to the progress of building that, redevelop that property, if I'm a magician, I could have it tomorrow ready to go. Because when I speak I, I'm speaking in behalf of my client, so please remember I is my client. So hopefully maximum, maximum would probably be two years, hopefully within, we start on it right away as soon as the inspection, the due diligence got over with, you know, and we have all the reports and of course the communication with Temple Terrace. And if things look clear, are ready to go, we establish right away, we start the construction, we don't have no problem. So it probably take maximum two years, but hopefully maybe within a year we finish it, you know, it's just, it's not a big project. It depends on the raw materials, you know, right now it's hard to get a bunch of stuff and it's more, it's almost double the price. But we still consist, we will do the best we can to do it as soon as we can. You know?
Thank you.
Thank you for raising the question, the concern, because it needs to be cleared in front of councilmember, what's happening with the project? So when we took over the project, we had four-sided shop fronts, this is what we wanted to do, people walk around all sides. We realized that the north parcel boundary actually passes right through the, like, you know, where you can't have, even have a facade. We were able to sit down with city staff, Mr. Stevenson was very kind to us, worked out, we had several meetings and we worked out how we can have the facade there, where people can at least walk, walk around. In order to achieve the, the north parcel correctly, we bid on the south parcel before. And now we want to make it both together. Of course, there was a COVID delay and then we, we were supposed to begin in March, April, where there was a COVID. In August last year, we lost our civil engineer, Mr. DeClaroza. So everything now came back to the first engineer, where he has to draw the whole thing, everything again, he's right here, Mr. Sam. So he, he took about two and a half months because even though it's, it's a, it was a half-done project, but he had to complete it. By the time we submitted to the city was January, there were some comments we passed in, March, this was approved. Since March, we have started to build, we expected that project, that's not a big project, it should be finished in six months' time. But because it's a pre-existing building, every time we do something, there's something coming up. Right now, there's a, the, the latest challenge what we have is a, is a drain pipe below the foundation. So the foundation had to move from eight feet to 11 feet. Just to do that, now all the metal framing and everything changed. At the same time now, we are in a further delay by 45 days just to acquire the metal. Like after, we were expecting this to finish in six months. COVID is a, is a cause, again, if there's an existing building, it takes more time. There, there are things when you break, you find it, okay, this needs to be replaced. Every smallest column, we have to call our structure engineer to see, okay, if that's okay? He gives us approval, then we go ahead. So it's just a back-and-through process, this has taken a lot of time. If we go with our proposal in the first, the first proposal, I think, that is no more than a year, year and a half to finish, maximum site. Because it's a, it's a 17,000 square feet building, easy to achieve, new building, it's, the, the site is nearly pat-ready. We just have to start building it, so that wouldn't take time. But where it comes to the existing building, where you have to find everything new inside, where you're attaching a structure to the existing building coming out, it is very complex as compared to build a complete new building starting from the ground. So that's the concern we had. But, but everything else is in order now. We, hopefully by January, by end of January, we should have the inauguration, so, thank you.
Mr. Singh, sit, hold on, I'm going at a turn if it's okay, but he's standing here, he just said something, I want to ask, so, I'm sorry. I, you mentioned a few times that the boundary between the, the two parcels runs closer to the building than you thought. You don't have any room for parking now, you can't hardly build a facade. I, I'm confused by this, how did, how is that possible? I mean, sure, the property's surveyed before you bought it, how, how is it possible that this line is closer to your building than you thought? How can that be?
Correct, so it's not closer to where we thought, we had the, the line always existed. And when we said we're going to present, the first presentation, we said that we're going to have the four-sided openings and the shop fronts. We were in, have the intention that we'll have this, we'll have a easement or something where we wouldn't have any problem across walking, going across. By the time we had an option, the city gave us an option, okay, why don't you do one thing, delete the, you know, we won't have any, any stuff on, on that side. And let's make the three side possible. So we thought about that, then what we, instead we thought that let's stick to original plan and now buy the next door property, so we have that. This plan, which was submitted in March, was on the basis that we have the south parcel already in hand. And now everything has changed back to, if, if it, if we don't acquire it, it goes back to normal, where people who will take, who will rent a spot without a car parking in front of them. So that just concerns us, no one. In fact, we have the north, the north side, where initially we were thinking that we're going to have the parking on the Chicago side. And that was a concern by the city that, you know, it can run into accidents, it's a, it's a traffic corner, so that was canceled. What we did is we, we put a whole big restaurant only on that side, so that we have the storefront look while people can sit outside and have a whole restaurant view. So we tried to work things out with the city, but there are some things which comes to an end where you can't proceed. So this parking is so important now, and the cross-axis. So we, we recently saw a property in Bruce Baytown where there's an, there was a nice strip center and their cross-axis was blocked because they made a residential complex inside. Now they have no option but to reverse back. So if that's the case, even the end part, like even the, the eastern side of the property towards the pond, where people are going to be, they have to go back to Chicago, they, if, if our neighbors wouldn't be that, you know, we don't know how it works.
So bear with me, I've been sitting up here a long time and maybe I missed it because I'm getting tired. But I don't, I didn't catch the answer to the question. How, how did you not know that there wasn't parking on the south side of the building? How did that become something that was discovered? I, I missed, if you said it, I apologize, but I didn't catch that.
Completely agree, so when we had the first meeting and, and negotiations with the city staff, we were being assured that we will get the cross-axis and we will get the parking as easement, which was changed least, about two months ago, we got an email stating that because it's a next-door property, which will be now available for sale, we can't guarantee you that. Now everything just changed because of that, before it was all cross-axis.
How could they have guaranteed you cross-access?
Verbally.
The property was for sale when you bought the first piece.
That, when I bought the first piece, I got the second, we, we got the second parcel, we don't need cross-access, everything is worked out. This March, when, when we had the meeting with you all, next day we were being told, hey, you need to rebid on the south parcel and we can't guarantee you the access now, so that's a thing.
All right.
So, you know, everything changed, I understand it just passed the due date and we have to renegotiate, and so this is where we are.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I jumped in front of you, ladies, councilmember questions?
You have questions?
No, not yet.
I have a question.
Vice Mayor.
So we went with you, we said we want you to build this.
Sure.
And now the next phase would compete, would complete the project.
Correct.
Correct, okay. The third piece, your second piece, you know, I hate to say this, but it sounds like the Tortigallas dream of people living upstairs and candy shops and restaurants and, you know, Disneyland and Temple Terrace. But it scares the bejeepers out of me, it's so big. And this, the, your, your first proposal sounds like it would complete what we agreed upon, what, two years ago now? However, however long it's been since we started this. And so I, I do understand, I mean, I'm watching your building every time I go to the post office and, and it really looks like a, it's a hot mess.
I agree, in fact, I, I realize that you do drive there because you realize there's a tree right on the, on the, on the restaurant, which is demolishing the restaurant, so I realize that you got, you're. And believe me, the way it is, it, it doesn't please me either. The first project, we expected eight months was the highest time we would have finished it. COVID delayed it, our, the, our late civil engineer, that delayed it. And I agree that because it was my first project, just to get organized as per U.S. ways of dealing, it delayed. But it's no more the way, so we have everything in order, we have the new team in order who is, who's very nice and very effective, very, like, the response is the same day, so it looks like everything will finish on time.
It does, thank you, that's my only comment.
Other questions for either prospective buyer, councilmembers? Thank you, Mr. Singh. Okay, so we've been through public comment, we've been through questions, so where are we going now?
Well, it's time for somebody to step up with a motion.
So, Mr. Stevenson, do you have anything to, I mean, I asked you at the previous meeting, do you have input on this? Because we rely on your judgment too.
Both of these, both of these projects have merit. Certainly, some of the, some of the new terms that have been brought out is new to me. We're talking about, you know, way, concessions on ad valorem, so on and so forth. We have an outstanding question here that we really need to get answered before we do that, before we commit to waiving any fees. that, before we commit to waiving any fees. Mr. Singh's project certainly would complement the other building that he is building. The, the construction delays that he has mentioned certainly have some validity to it. But at the same token, there are a lot of times where I go by there and there's very few people working in there. So this construction schedule scares me a lot. And committing to another building, another 17,000 square feet makes, makes me a little nervous, to be honest with you. I, I do think that we've had several conversations with Mr. Singh about dates and completion dates and start dates, so on and so forth, that haven't really come to fruition. So that makes me a little nervous to now be giving him another piece of property. That being said, we certainly need to negotiate a contract for the sale and development of that property. I think that we would be a little bit more diligent with assigning some dates if we were to in fact do that. And we can certainly tie some penalties to those dates for performance if he is in agreement to do that. Mr. Raffey's project certainly has some credence as well. I do think they're probably a little bit more capable of getting started quicker, from what I understand and from my conversations with Mr. Berman. So it is not as big as the building. Certainly, it could be painted and decorated the same to match Mr. Singh's building, but obviously it will be a system little project. You know, we really, we, we're really trying to concentrate with these developers, both of them. I know Mr. Pauli has had conversations with each of them. Not as much as when you can build it or what you're going to pay for it, more than what are you going to build, okay? I get concerned when somebody says, I'm going to build restaurant retail and then they come in and they start changing the use. That certainly is not, is not something that we're looking for. And I know council's not looking for. We're not looking to put a total gym down there. That's not one, what we're looking for. We certainly don't want a large daycare facility down there. There was a suggestion to put an Aldi down there right next to Winn-Dixie. I don't think that's prudent to do. So we have tried to, tried to steer both of these developers into telling us what you're going to do, more so than how you're going to do it and when are you going to do it. So that to me is very important. I do think either one of these projects that you, either one of these developers that you decide to go with, when we negotiate a purchase and sale agreement, we're going to be very diligent on what we're putting in there as far as uses.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Council members?
I have a comment.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
I do feel that I, I'm, I would like to take the second project off the table, the number three, if you will, by according to way we're looking. So my comments are directed at Mr. Singh in that I, I really, I don't know why I feel, I would feel obligated to help him finish the first project by giving him the nod for the second piece in that it will give him what we told him he could have and then now we're telling him he can't have because somebody else is going to buy it, the easement that, that he had. And whether or not that was a conversation or not, in my world, that's a gentleman's agreement and that should stick. So I don't know how that.
I see what you're talking about. Can you lighten the rest of us on this?
Well, if, if Mr. Singh was told two years ago, don't worry, you can use this easement. And now two months ago, he was told, well, we're getting ready to sell it, so you might not have it.
I don't think that we could have done that because the city, the property's for sale. We can't give cross access agreement.
But it is going to be an issue. It is going to be an issue.
We try to work cross access with all developments.
I'm sure.
Especially in the downtown, just like you got to cross.
Of course. Of course. And I'm not, I'm not saying that in an accusatory way. What I'm getting to is that this would now be a seamless project. We would have the beginning and then the next piece of property. You saw the buildings. You know basically what it would look like. There are no waivers being asked. I mean, this, this to me, his number one project seems to be the cleanest one. And yes, you're right, it's been taking a long time. And, you know, we're all, every one of us start half of our sentences with before COVID, okay? And we're getting tired of saying it. So to me, that seems to be the, the, the cleanest of the projects. I really do like the other project in that, but, but there's so many, well, if we have to tear down a building and if, if, you know, there, there's a lot of ifs there. The only one that doesn't really have any ifs is the Enigma number one. That's, that's the only one. It's, here it is, we're offering you this much money, we're ready to go, it's going to look like the other piece, let's go. Shovel, put shovels to the dirt. Both of the other ones have so much, and I know that every project we, at this stage, every single one of them have a lot of unknowns because until they start negotiating and what have you. But this one seems to me to be the, the one that's the most ready, asking for the least. So that's my choi, that, that would be my choice.
Other council members?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr.?
And I'm not, I'm not, I have a stroke up here. I'm not alien. But do we have to do anything?
No.
Okay. Here's my, here's my point. Here's my point. We don't have a gun to our head except for an unsightly building down there. And it's side, side question. How much would it cost, Ms. Susan, how much would it cost to tear that building down? I'm thinking outside the box here, the, the steak and ale or the.
Curry ball.
Curry ball.
Cause of tear down?
Tear down.
Probably eight, $10,000.
Eight, $10,000. Okay.
Twenty-five thousand. Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah. Twenty-five to thirty thousand.
Yeah. Twenty to twenty-five thousand.
Okay. All right. So let's, okay. My, my point is we have an unsightly building down there that we'd all like to get rid of, okay? But going back to what Mr. Berman said earlier, as we open the apartments, as we, you know, because we, we put in more residential, going to put pressure on those apartments also. And that kind of, that kind of hinders Richmond Group and what they were trying to do, okay? So if we, and I agree with you, I don't like the third project. It's just too ambitious. It's great, looks, looks marvelous. And it would be great if we could put that down there. I don't know that we, that you could ever support that, but that's not my problem if, if it is, if, if you can't. But we don't have a gun to our head. And if the market is improving, given the intangibles of what could happen next year with tax increases and so forth, I would like to take, I would almost consider thinking about, okay, let's get the other stuff open. Let's get the apartments open. Let's get them occupied. Let's see what draw gets driven into that area. And even if we had to invest a $25,000 to tear down that building so it's not so unsightly, might not be a bad investment. Either, either project, we're looking at a 25, a $50,000 a year foregoings of the, of TIF money or $140,000 with the other project if, if we had to go that route. I'm concerned with the delays that we're, we're seeing down in Enigma. And you know something? If two years from now, the market improves, Mr. Singh might have a better, better project to come back with. I could support at this moment, I think, not doing anything, just sit back and relax for a minute. Let, let the dust settle. These, these offers aren't going to go away, I don't think. I think we might have a better, make better use of that, of that land down there in maybe 12 months. I don't know. I, I'm just thinking outside the box. I don't want us to make a decision just because we think we have to because we have an offer in front of us. I don't think that that's necessarily the case at this point. The debt service is covered, the, the, the long-term, you know, when, when does the balloon hit for the, for the, for the main debt, Charles?
We've got a couple of years yet.
Got a few years yet. Okay. So I mean, we, we have time, we can work with this. The TIF monies are planned, the budget's set for that, and, and the budget's looked forward, looking forward at least two years or three years. It's not going to be any increase to anybody to, if we have to carry it for a year. We've already done it so long.
We have seen that one council member so far that wants to talk about one of the projects, one that thinks probably don't talk about any of them right now.
At this moment.
Council member Abel.
I think Mr. Singh's second project, it has a lot of exciting things about it, but I also think it's too much. And I think that there's too much that he's asking for from, on the part of the city in order to do that project. So I would have to go along with what Councilwoman Donahue said about putting that one aside. This is where I'm going to be a little bit blunt, but I do want something that I can get excited about. And both of the, the other proposals, to me, they're, they're just retail and restaurant. And, you know, I still hold on to some dreams of having a, a walkable mixed use downtown. And I know that maybe all of my dreams won't come true, but I, I would like to, to take the time to really give it a chance, to, to give a proposal like that, to come forward. And, you know, maybe if, if the gentleman here would come with another proposal that, that has more of the elements that we're, we're looking for based on the, the feedback that they hear, I'm sure we would be willing to give some concessions, but maybe not 10 years worth of, worth of taxes concessions. But I think something in between, like there's too much and there's not enough. And then there's, there's got to be a just right in there somewhere that, you know, fits within our parameters and allows some walkable mixed use development in our downtown that we can really be proud of. That's all.
Thank you, council member. Council member Chambers?
For comment, a, a question probably for Mr. Berman. Would there be any increased value, decreased value, or it doesn't matter to the cost of the, or the worth of the property if the curry ball was demolished?
The curry ball being demolished would be a positive. It would certainly, at least the cost of demolition would be added to the value of the property. So let's say the property's worth a million dollars, it'd be a million, $25,000.
We talked about this at our last or previous, one of these meetings.
We did.
Because I brought this question up before about tearing that building down.
Sorry, I was up there a long time and I'm.
That's okay. I, I get it.
We reiterate one point is about the, we had three off, we have now three offers all around the million dollar range. Two, two buyers here tonight, a third buyer that rescinded their offer, but they were all still in that $950,000. So the pricing's been established by the market. And keeping in mind, this is a very unusual, as Nick referred, very unusual parcel. It's not a square, it's not a rectangle, it's a irregular shaped, hidden behind another building. So I really believe there's a limit to how much the market will bear. So a year from now, could we get a million one maybe? But we also could be in recession a year from now and get nothing. So I, for what it's worth, I just think these are legitimate offers, qualified developers, and they merit the consideration to go forward or at least advance the next level for more discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with you.
You still have the floor.
Yeah. So now my, my comment, I, it's going to sound wishy-washy, but I agree with all the other three council members and the mayor.
I didn't talk yet, you don't know.
It sure sounded like I heard stuff. You know, I would like to see something that excites me in both those projects, one and two, and agree three's out. It would be great, but I, I would, I couldn't do three. These just don't quite excite me enough yet. Two, I, I agree that if we go with something, Enigma, patterning their building, so I'm agreeing with you also. I'm also agreeing with Mr. Schisler that I think if we wait a while with the apartments coming online and the other businesses coming online, not so much the purchase price. I'm not, I'm very happy with the purchase price that I would get from both groups tonight. But I just, I'm not thrilled about the projects I'm seeing. So I, I don't know. So I don't know what, what I would like down there, but.
Well, can I ask a question then? I, I keep hearing, and I hear from citizens too, they'll say, hey, I have a great idea of something for that building. I'm like, you know what? It's not my building. And so I don't really get a chance to say, hey, I want you to put a brew pub in there, okay? But I do. My point is, what are we, we're talking about moving it down the, kicking, you know, moving it down, saying, come back to us another time, but we're not really saying what we want in there, even using the terms that we all banter around all the time. I want a walkable mixed use. I think what, what we've been shown tonight is walkable in that it will connect to what we have already started building. And once that whole thing gets built, plus the park, I mean, it, it will become walkable. So, so what are we asking them to come back with? You know, we're, we're really being, we're asking them to do things that we don't normally do in this process. They tell us, I'm going to build this building. Somebody says I'm going to build an office building. We don't say, well, how many doctors, lawyers, accountants are going to be in there? It's an office building. And doesn't the same thing apply here? I don't think there's going to be a daycare center or, I mean, there's going to be restrictions on what can go in those buildings anyway. I was delighted to hear that there's going to be a long restaurant there because that, that definitely was a concern as to what could you possibly put there that people would feel safe? So, so he's already planning on doing that, which is one of the things we asked them for. So I hate kicking the can down the road in that, I mean, I can see that's the direction we're probably going in tonight, but, you know, you, as we all recall with the Paragon project, until we signed the line, on the dotted line for the apartments, he had a heck of a time getting anybody to commit. And so we need to help our business owner here, get people to commit by us committing, this is the one we want to go for, now let's go negotiate and get this thing up off the ground.
Do I get a turn?
You sure do.
Okay, because you got two now. All right. So I, here's my take. Not that I'm, I, I agree with much of what I've heard. So the option two, it's a wonderful option, but to me, both of these deals that require tax deferrals are off the table in my book. We, we, our city's financial plan, we count, we are counting on the sale of these properties and the TIF money for our, I mean, that's, we've been counting on that for 20 years. So I, I think that's a, that's just a deal breaker right there. I don't, I don't think there's anything more to talk about. That leaves one project on the table, and that's their option A. And their option A, I don't have any problems with the sale price is fine and the conditions. I mean, I'm not a real estate guy. Look, all looks fine to me. I don't have a problem with the, it doesn't seem like a lowball offer. But I got to tell you, I'm a little lukewarm about another retail, you know, I, I, I just, you know, I know we're not going to get downtown Disney here, but how many more strip centers do we need? And, and how many more lunch restaurants in strip centers do we need? And again, I'm not trying to be blunt, but that's the only way I know to be sometimes. It would be a whole lot easier to gauge what retail we're talking about here if the other project was finished. Because retail is a huge term. That's everything from golden diamond source and Rolex dealer to used rugs. And we don't know what's going in there. And, and in fact, I'm not even sure, I mean, I'm the mayor and I'm not even really sure what this building's going to look like. We've had talk about it's going to be internal, like little stores, it's going to be an inside walking mall. Now, then it's, there's talk of it being four sides. If I held a gun to your head, could you tell me what this building's going to look like when it's done? Because I don't know.
Only because I have a picture.
Not that one, the other one.
Right? And so, you know, retail can be anything. It, it can be upscale, you know, Joseph A. Banks, Brooks Brothers, or it can be St. Vincent DePaul. And, and I don't mean anything disparaging, but we don't know what's in there. And I don't think we need another strip center. I just don't think so. And I didn't like, no offense, sir, I know you come here all the time and I love it when you come here because I think you're a great guy. But I was lukewarm about this before you asked for the tax deferral too, because it's retail. It's like, oh my God, another strip center. I don't think that this, that we're ready to do that yet. I don't think that this, that we're ready to do that yet. I don't think that our residents in this city want us to do this. We're not there, right? If we've been broke and we're holding on to this property and nobody's interested, and we got nothing going on, okay, that's the best we can do. We're not there. We got apartments coming online in six months, probably less. Paragon is, I mean, we're not there yet. We got Amazon employees coming, a thousand of them are gonna be looking for places to go. We, this is not the fire sale time. Gil, I think you're absolutely right. This is not the time to say, well, you know, okay, another strip center is the best we can do. No, I don't think so.
We don't want them to put a rooms-to-go down there.
No.
So, what do we want down there?
We want something besides another strip center.
Well, maybe we should define what it is that we would want.
That's my point.
Well, you know, I think we have. We want, we want, we all know what we want. We want a nice upscale restaurant, which, you know, that's market-driven, and nobody, he's right. Nobody wants to do restaurants right now. Restaurants are tough. The service industry, there was a rough business before, and the COVID's made it rougher. The craft beer thing we all want, I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, and I'm not sure that that, that, we haven't passed the crest of that thing. I don't know what the next thing is. We want that, I don't know if that's coming, right? He wants to build something like that, that we want, that's an asset to the city, then we're talking about some tax deferrals, not 10 years maybe, but the tree mitigation, okay, we're willing to give you a hundred thousand dollars in considerations to put something that our city needs and wants. But to give 10 years of tax deferral, well, no, that's another project. That would be great. I like that idea, but that's a pretty, I mean, that would be wonderful, but I don't, I just don't know if that's realistic, and the tax deferrals kill it in my mind. But, you know, come and build a Florida Avenue Brewery or something, okay, I'm willing to, you know, I'll take the trees out myself. Right, but that's not what we're.
You made the offer.
That's not anyway. I've said it. You know where I'm, you know where I'm. Sure.
What I've been hearing is that we are not very sure, because there's so much development happening in Temple Terrace. It's just a suggestion, decision is yours. And there's also a challenge in Enigma's capability of finishing the project. These are the two challenges. Where I come from, I need to finish the project, so I have the cross axes and I'm good. With the due diligence period, what we ask for in the, if it is, what we're expecting is a very small project, maybe it looks big here, but we have done 20-story buildings in India, I've shown that previously, these are what we built. It's not that this would be our first project of high-rises building and all those things. It is something very similar and small thing for us. So, how about if we come up to an agreement that we ask for nine-month due diligence because there's Swift Mud involved, and there are, where all the others departments who are involved to have the big project completed? If you all don't want the small project, if you want something like a downtown which looks like that, I want it. Genuinely, that's my, that's why my first proposal is only one minute, and the second proposal is five minutes. The reason is I'm concentrating more on the bigger proposal. So, if we have the due diligence period of eight months, that's nine months from now to closing, if you're not able to do it, you guys can cancel it. It's not something that's signed on it, that we will be taking it. By that time, we'll have everything in order. We'll have, we have already done three meetings with Swift Mud. We just need our first, the last final meeting, what would be the setbacks from the pond and everything, and we are all set to go. In the meantime, in the nine-months time, we submit a complete, you know, corrected everything, all the, the way it should be built, and you can take it from there. But at least in the meantime, we will be sure that the property is owned by us now, and we have the cross axes, and we just finish this project. Even though if it's not accessible, what are the options? If I go back to the engineers to draw it again, that's gonna be another three months. I'm not going for that. The only thing, it would be a dead passage on that side, nobody's gonna be taking it. That's my dead investment kept there. That's the only thing.
Mr. Singh, I'll be candid and blunt with you, because that's how I am sometimes, and I don't mean any.
No, I agree, yeah.
But I don't think that we are ready to run the risk of conveying property to somebody that, yeah, now you own it, right? Once you own it, it's difficult for us to control what you do with it.
Until nine months, I don't. So, until my due diligence period, until I don't pay it off, I don't. It is just the deposit money I've put in. And by that time, you will see the development being finished, you will see the restaurants are in, or whatever retails are in, that depends upon the market. We want, I'm negotiating with Panera Bread since so long, and there's, you know, I'm not able to get them in. They want a specific traffic that's gonna build now with the apartments, and that's gonna build with the other, if I show them the whole project, this is what is coming, people would be jumping in. It will just makes me very easy to finish the development. Once you have your, once you have your tenants signed in, you want to finish your project. You don't want to keep it going. That's, that's all about.
That's exactly what Mr., the guy from Paragon said. He couldn't finish the deal until he knew, he knew what the apartments were coming in, and then he built it out according to what they wanted, and that's what you're doing too, correct? Yeah.
Also with Paragon, I agree with Mr. Stevenson. He says, you know, four years of, that development's gonna take some time, I'm sure. Paragon, since they've signed the deal until now, it's two-year and eight months. A simple project like apartments made out of wood, if it's, that's gonna take you so time, this is a complex project. It's not a something simple. It's a, it's a simple thing for us. We just have to put the money in. But I'm sure there would be, you know, if this COVID does keep going and we have shortages of material, where are we? We want to finish it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Singh. All right, councilmembers.
Yes. Excuse me for interruption. I just need to respond to Council Donahue. She said if, 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 I mean, I'm not gonna use if anymore. Possible, we make it a restaurant, possible, a strip center, possible both, okay? So, now, the due diligence actually, when it's given to us, will give us more supply or more support to figure out which way we're gonna go, okay? Now, I'm suggesting to you guys, James, he says something about tip and tip and taxes, whatever. You know, the biggest, the biggest tip you guys are gonna get is, this is a banded property. It's vacant property. It makes the whole street look terrible. Everybody passing by this tacky building there. You want the city of Temple Terrace to be beautiful. The best tip for you to get somebody get in, clean it, build it, and finish with it. And that's what we go and do. So, now, I think I'm suggesting to you guys, leave it negotiable. We are willing to negotiate. You guys make a questionnaire, what do you wanna build in it? Send us something, say, hey, what do you want? Give us suggestion, what you prefer. We look at our plan. If we can fit it in, maybe we'll reply to that one. You know, we, you know, you're the council members, and you know what you want in your city, and we're willing to work with it. So, tell us what you want, maybe we'd, we'd come up and say, hey, okay, no restaurant, no strip center, you don't like strip center, we'll do it like an event hall with a restaurant. Event hall, which is hold like 300 people, just like Omar Hall. We make one profitable, you know, it's retail. It's not retail, it's like people, they come over and reserve a room. We can do that. I mean, that's other option on the table, we can do that. We just, my client wanna invest in Temple Terrace. He wanna stay in Temple Terrace, so he's open. So, we leave it up to you guys. I mean, we're open. You give us suggestion, we'll work with you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stevenson, let me ask you a procedural question. There's been a lot of robust, to overuse a word here, right, a lot of robust discussion. It's been good. It's been productive, I think. I think they've learned some things about what we'd like to see, and we've learned some things about what they, I think this has been good for them, and it's been good for us. So, let me ask you this. I would hate after this discussion, they're going away going, now I got a better idea where their heads are, right? And I know that they're not gonna go for this, and I know they're not gonna go for this, but they might go for this now that I've heard from them. Is it appropriate legal for us to leave these open and give them an opportunity? Now, they've already submitted their bids, but to give them, the prices aren't, haven't really been the issue. For them to get an opportunity to go back and get around their table and huddle up and say, now that we've heard this, is there something we can change, talk to city manager about, and you guys come back to us in a month or something to see if there's worth? Is that kosher, or are we doing something inappropriate here?
To the attorney.
What's that? Well, I'm kinda asking both, because I, you've been in this business a long time, and legally I need to know from, really from both.
Mr. Berman too can weigh in. He does this all the time.
So, yeah, you guys give us some guidance here, please.
I wish I could.
Okay, we'll pass.
I would probably defer that to the legal department to find out if in fact that's, that's something that we can do. I don't, I'd have to give that some thought before I give you an answer, really.
Do you think it's something that we should do, or do you have another path that you would recommend?
Well, I, I think, I think it's something that we should do, okay? I do think that, you know, one of the things that we keep hearing out of both of these developers is due diligence. And we have a due diligence also, right? We have a due diligence to do the right thing, not just pick a, pick a development, okay? And again, we're not obligated to take any of these. We can certainly defer these. And it's certainly, I think it would be very prudent to allow the apartments to get finished up. There's the restaurant that's opening up in the, in Mr. Moon's project here shortly. You're gonna see a lot of different activity down there, I think, within the next six months, so. I don't think it'd be premature to work with these developers and see if they can come up with a use, if you would, that would be suitable to counsel. But at the same token, I don't think we ought to be rushing into just picking a development.
Well, you didn't give us an answer to the question, though. So, what would you do? I mean, would you, would you say no for the time being, or would you send these?
That decision's up to council. You're asking me my preference? My preference would be is to table this and, and see what happens.
Okay.
We've got nine months of due diligence. You know, nine months of due diligence, we can certainly wait nine months on our end and see what happens in the market down there.
City attorney, any input?
Sounds like good advice. I think, I'm, I see which way the wind is blowing here, and it seems that you would all prefer to table this. You can, and that's as opposed to postponing to a date certain. You don't have to do that. You can just table it and see perhaps what these particular developers may come back with and get this back on an agenda at another time, when it seems that they're, they may be ready to proceed and that we're ready to proceed. It'll also give Mr. Singh perhaps a chance to do something with the building he already has and show that he can finish something, or at least substantially finish something, so that you have more confidence.
Okay, thank you.
Are they protected, though?
Hang on a second. Councilmember Schisler.
What, all right, we had to file a legal, we had a legal request to sell. I can't remember the terminology. What was it?
Disposal of property.
Disposal of property, okay. What, what, are we bound by anything with that at this point, or do we have to refile the disposal?
You're not obligated to do anything with it.
No, 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 I understand that, but are we, do we have to go through the whole process all over again?
We would have to go through that, read, and to answer your question maybe a little bit more detail, if you postpone this or do not accept any of these developments, nine months from now, we can advertise it for sale again. Between now and then, maybe what we can do is work with the developers and advertise it so that it is very specific what we're looking for, rather than restaurant retail, okay? That would give us an opportunity to say, here's what we want on this piece of property. We want, you know, a brew pub. We want 17,000 square feet of clothing store, whatever it is the council's looking for. One of the things I wrote down here is, what do we want? I don't know that we ever know what we want. We've always talked about retail, restaurant, which is a walkable situation. We have certainly been discouraging big-box stores. That, we've heard that for years, that we, we don't want a big-box store. So, I guess, in order to, to maybe dial in on what council wants, perhaps that nine months is something that we need to start working on amongst ourselves and define before we advertise this again, what we want, okay?
Councilmember Chambers, and then Vice Mayor Donahue.
I mean, if you want a sit-down restaurant, a sit-down dinner restaurant, you may not get any proposals, because restaurants aren't being built nowadays.
Yeah, I know.
But if that's what we want, that's what we advertise for.
A question, if we table tonight, then we're not rejecting any of the proposals, so we just table, and these two same developers get considered the next time?
Yes, if they wish to.
All right, so for us to open it up, we would have to reject these tonight, or, or when we bring the table motion back?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Well, I mean, there was, there was some mention of waiting a period of time and then re-advertising and asking for proposals, but if we table this, we are.
Essentially, when the Congress tables something, it essentially dies, and someone can bring it up again, but that's what they do to take no action. So, when I say postponing to a date certain, that means you have decided that you are definitely going to reconsider it on that certain date. So, that's sort of the difference between postponing and tabling. When you table it, it's, it's out there. It's just out there. But in essence, they use that to just let it die.
So, if we tabled it, Mr. Stevenson could bring both of them potentially back up after some discussion.
And put it on an agenda.
Yes. And that's what I would prefer. I want, they've done their work. I want to give them some consideration.
Okay. Vice Mayor Donahue's next, and then, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm done.
Vice Mayor.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I want to happen. These two, we've had all this talk tonight, and everyone is going to know what was said. So, if we need to do something that protects the two of them from now, numbers three, four, five, and six show up next time, but they've heard, they've seen their, their hand. They know what they, what they have offered. They know everything. So, I would like to postpone it to a date certain so that we say, come back to us in, pick a date, 60 days, 90 days, whatever, with your next, with your next best offer, and we're gonna look at both of you. And then if we say, eh, eh, still didn't do it, then we say, we're out. But I'm very concerned that they're, they've now shown everything, and everybody knows what they're willing to pay, including the increase in, in price. So, I, I want to vote in such a way that we protect these two business owners and future developers.
I think if I understand the process correctly, though, we do that by tabling too. We don't need a date certain because a tabling, let me finish, a tabling.
Just end.
We table it, and then if the discussions with the city manager and Mr. Berman are productive, then those two come back. We don't put it back open for another.
Correct. I don't want to put it back.
Right, so I don't think we need a date certain in order to achieve that.
I misunderstood then. I thought she said tabling, it just ended it.
Unless somebody puts it back on the agenda, it could. And if they can't, if everybody still wants tax deferrals, and we've been very clear on that, it won't come back.
They don't. Yeah, but no.
If nothing substantively changes, it won't come back.
Can I, can I make a motion?
He's ready to make a motion, but unless I give you a chance to.
I don't have anything.
Okay, we have, councilmember.
I'd like to make a motion to table the, to table the whole discussion, but with, with the premise or whatever under the term, that everybody, all parties involved, understand that we're not rejecting your claim, your, your offers. We're not rejecting that at all. It's just that we think we need to wait and see as the other projects develop, your other one included, okay? What we want in there, and that might, that timeframe might help to solidify what could possibly be driven in there. So, I know it's a long complicated, but, but that's the explanation of why I say we should table it. So, I moved to table.
Okay, so your motion's gotta be short, just move to.
Yeah, move to table. Move to table, but that's the explanation of why I want to do that. I don't want to reject it.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Yes. So, how does that?
You're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you. How does that...
Wow.
How does that do what I'm... What my goal is? How does that not open it up to 10 other bidders and gives them the...
Because we didn't put it back open for...
We're not opening it.
Okay, so we're just tabling this, and we're not opening it up to anybody? Okay, then I'm... That was my goal. Thank you.
But I think in the meantime, we, as a body, need to give direction to the city manager. Maybe we have a workshop, I don't know, some way of communicating, so that we can better define... We may not do that for 60 or 90 days. Better define what we're looking for in there, so that everybody and all the parties involved have a better feel for what we're looking for, and go forward with that.
Is there further discussion on the motion? The only comment I would say is, I don't know that we know what we're looking for, but we know it's not more of the same. And so, I don't, you know... Sit-down restaurant, that'd be great. I don't know if anybody would do it. Brew pub, we've been trying for years. Nobody will do it, so, you know...
He's mentioned Banera Bread. That's a sit-down breakfast.
Okay. Mr. Stevenson, we're gonna vote on the motion. Did you have something that we need to...
Just, again, Mr. Mayor, just thinking out loud here a little bit. I have some concern of negotiating out of the sunshine with these two developers, if that's what I'm being instructed to do. Okay.
Well...
I mean, I don't know how to move this thing forward if...
I don't know either. I thought it was what he was being instructed to do.
Is that a problem? Can we ask? Is that a Mr. Berman?
No, that's a Pam Sashon thing. That's exactly what we're asking you to do, so is that permissible or not?
It's certainly permissible. If they want to go to Mr. Berman instead and present some alternative project they want, or something more firm, that I'm getting a cheesecake factory willing to go in there, something that they can tell to Mr. Berman, and when they're ready, or however many months, you know, either Mr. Stevenson can decide it seems ready to bring back to you, then it can come back to you on that agenda. So, they can continue to talk to Mr. Berman about their projects, and Mr. Stevenson does not have to negotiate it with them.
Let me just ask a clarifying question. If this issue's tabled, and at some point, nothing substantive changes, and Mr. Berman doesn't come to Mr. Stevenson, and we don't hear this again, we can still, at some point, open another notice of disposal, right? I mean, we're not gonna hold this forever, because we got something on the table.
Once the apartments open up, and they're all filled with tenants, and it's ready to open up again, you can do that.
Just making sure that we're not putting shackles on ourselves. If we want to go for another notice of disposal, we can.
Correct.
It was the intent of my motion.
What's that?
That's the intent of my motion, to give it time to develop.
Give it time. Does that satisfy Mr. Stevenson? Okay. Mr. Berman, everything?
Yes, sir.
Thumbs up from you? Okay, all right. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no nays. Tabled. City managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things here. We've got just a couple notices coming to you. October 30th is the Fall Festival, just to remind everybody. It's October 30th at 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. It's at the soccer field between Rec Center and Lewis Elementary. The cost is free admission, although, Leisure Services is looking for donations of non-practical food. There's a truck-or-treat, there's haunted walkers, there's carnival games, food trucks, arts and crafts, costume contest at 8:30, just to put that out to the general public. We won't have another meeting until that happens, so I hope everybody can attend that. Again, Leisure Services puts on a great Fall Festival for the community. Just to let you know, we are anticipating... Not anticipating, we've already bought more signs, the yard signs for Veterans Day. That seemed to be a big hit last year. We have already started to get more sign-ups than what we had last year. Just to let you know, we'll continue with that program. One of the things that I put in front of you guys this evening is for future discussion on our Centennial Celebration. We have kind of crafted a... And really just crafted, if you would, some kind of format, so that we can at least start talking about this. What I'd like to do is to have each of you kind of review that. There's a resolution, and also the formation of a committee that my office has put together. Again, just some thoughts for discussion purposes. We're not establishing any kind of program here until council kind of weighs in on, what do you want to see? What do you want to do? So, I think it's time to start talking about that, so that we kind of get that going. Probably next meeting. Next meeting is growing very big, with a lot of business that we need to take care of. So, it may be the second meeting in November, but we'll certainly schedule that sometime in November. One of the other things that I will bring back to you in November, from request of council, is out of our budget meeting. We talked about a 1% reserve from salary increases. You wanted some kind of report on compression. I am working on that right now, and certainly, again, we will be able to show you that we don't have a problem. We've had to make some tweaks on some people that have been here for a very long time to not cause that issue, but they're very limited, so. Most of it's working out pretty well, but we'll provide that to you here, probably in the month of November as well, so. I think that's about it.
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
What color are the two unmarked cars gonna be?
What do I?
What color are the two unmarked cars gonna be? What color are the two unmarked cars gonna be?
Looking for a black Mustang.
You know what? I didn't even say they were unmarked. I particularly put that in red, so I wouldn't say that.
Okay.
You're not supposed to know.
Oh, okay.
He just gave it away.
Casually and seriously, like it was a legitimate question. It took everybody a minute.
Anything else? City Attorney report?
I have nothing.
Okay. I just have one thing at the close. Oh, go ahead.
No.
No, go ahead.
He's gotta get far at work.
I know it was said in the Friday report.
By the way, we're out of new business now.
You never asked for it. I was ready. It said that I had asked for the city manager to look into the noise ordinance. I sent an email, because I was made aware of a real break in our noise ordinance, and so I sent an email to, you know, one Sunday afternoon, to anybody who would answer me saying, hey, we need to look at our noise ordinance, because unfortunately, the way it reads right now is rather vague, and a new resident thinks that you can just do whatever you want until 10 o'clock at night, and then you can turn it off. So, I did not direct the city manager, but I would like, if you don't mind, with your permission, to direct the city manager to start, and the city attorney, to start looking at some of these little holes in it, because unfortunately, when our police officers arrive, they're looking at the ordinance, they're going, well, I'm not too sure. And so, I want to give them something that they know for sure, they can, you know... I mean, it's a prickly...
It's a very prickly.
It is prickly, but trust me, right now, the issue is extremely prickly.
Well, is... First of all, do we know that our ordinance is deficient?
Well, that's what I want them to look at and say. I just would like for us to direct the staff to look at our ordinance and see.
Listen, I've been dealing with sound ordinances for 30 years.
Me, too. They're the worst.
They're worse than chasing chickens. They're better than chasing chickens.
Right behind them is sign ordinance.
Yeah, right there. And they're the easiest ones to get kicked out.
Yeah, but this is no easy project, so I don't know if our ordinance is defective.
We've had discussions already. We've started to look at our current ordinance. I don't know that... I can't sit here and say that it can't be tweaked, but there's a certain amount of anxiety when it comes to getting compliance. Very difficult, very difficult. But we will review it. I certainly will. We can take on this project. Mrs. Shon and I can certainly exchange some notes here and try to do what we can, but it is not cut and dry.
No, it's not, which is why, when the officers arrive, as you know, they're sitting there with a, well...
Yeah, but I really would have preferred that we had some discussion about what we think is defective, before we had them embark on this.
No, no, no. I just want them to look at it and come back to us and say, yeah, you know what? There's a big hole here, or our ordinance is sound, no pun intended, and we're good to go. Okay?
When I got Councilwoman Donahue's email, we looked at it the very next day, to try to make a comparison between what our ordinance is and, say, what St. Petersburg has, because years ago, I rewrote their entire ordinance. It has changed since then, but I've had a lot of experience, too, with drafting noise ordinances. And the tool is for enforcement is to provide us specific measures, and decibels is one measurement. You have to have the proper equipment, and they do have excellent equipment now, much different than years ago, when I was working with the police officers and use of the decimeter. Now, they've got little handheld devices that actually give little... Like a cash register prints out a little tape. It prints out the decibel reading. So, they're a lot easier to use. There are cheap ones and expensive ones, and all in between. The other way to do it, if you don't want to measure decibels, is to do it by time, and we've got... Ours is written primarily by time, and one of the problems seem to be is, although we have the basic part of the ordinance that has the prohibitions in it, you read down, and suddenly, there's a section that talks specifically about amplified type of sounds, radios and boom boxes and things, and all it says is, is that it can't be loud and raucous between 10:00 p.m. and I think 6:00 a.m., or maybe it's 8:00 a.m., but still... And that loophole, so to speak, is what's allowing the problem to exist in this neighborhood right now. The person thinks they can pretty much be as loud as they want until 10 o'clock, and that's every day of the week. There's a possibility to make this a little bit more restrictive, and maybe things need to get a little more quiet on Sunday, a little earlier than 10 o'clock. Most ordinances say, you know, you can be loud on the weekends and on legal holidays. I've never understood why it's okay to be loud on legal holidays, but a lot of ordinances, for some reason, allow that. Not every holiday is 4th of July, but yet, it's allowed. So, there is room to make tweaks in this, to make it a little more palatable. One of the things I was told is that somebody's turning on music full blast and leaving for the day. You should not be able to turn on amplified sound in your home full blast when you're not home. And you can... And many ordinances are written by measurement. If it can be audibly heard, and that has been determined to mean that you can hear the words and decipher the words of the song being played, or the television program and what the spoken words are, if you can audibly hear that, may it be 15 feet, or 100 feet, whatever you decide the restriction you want to make, but if you can hear it audibly on the next property inside their house with the window closed, perhaps we want to say that's too loud. And that's something that any reason... And it's a reasonable man's standard, so if you have supersonic hearing, that doesn't count, but if a reasonable man, being one of our police officers, is able to stand in the complainant's home and audibly hear the music being played on the next property, then perhaps that should be a violation of our ordinance. So, there's room to make changes on this, and it's unfortunate that it has to be done, but it's like, you know, every time you have a new tenant and they figure out some other crazy thing to do, you change your lease. Well, this is the same kind of thing. Somebody who's making a whole neighborhood miserable, it might be time to look at the ordinance, so.
All right. I'm perfectly fine with us looking at the ordinance if it needs to. The part I'm not so perfectly fine about is, guys, we gotta be careful here that we're acting as a body, and not one of us has launched on this, because you've... Obviously, you've done some work on this.
That was not my intent.
I know, but it was your effect.
It is what happened, so that's why. My goal was to come here tonight, which is the first opportunity to say... So, I didn't know that all this activity was going on.
But we can't... One of us get a complaint, and the next thing you know, we've got the city staff revising an ordinance, and two weeks later, the rest of the council knows about this. That's not...
I did not ask them to change the ordinance.
But that scenario happens all the time, where a citizen will send us an email, send me an email, or see me in the store. I don't go to public, so I'm safe there. And you call the city manager, or forward an email or something, and the staff does work on that, because that's an issue.
But I think what Andy's saying is, if you see a water leak... I reported a sinkhole at Greco, and a water leak in front of the clay courts. That's something that we should do.
Yeah, yeah.
But not an ordinance.
Not an ordinance, but I don't know what you said, but she, again, asked tonight for the permission to staff to work on the ordinance, and I agree with that.
Okay, well, they already are, so...
Well, and I was surprised to know how much activity had started.
I think you understand what I'm saying. I think our rules even say something that's gonna be over four hours or whatever.
Right.
I mean, I don't think anybody's trying to split that.
And I really... It was not my intent.
I know.
I appreciate that they did that, but it was not my intent.
Okay, I understand.
I beg forgiveness.
And it's given.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to come up with, the council?
I forget, you want to close?
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Ava.
About a month ago, I came forward with, from the Affordable Housing Board. They're passing the Tenant Bill of Rights, and you all received a copy of the ordinance from the city attorney several weeks ago, and I was wondering if you all had anything, any concerns about it that you thought we should discuss, because I still think that we should find what of it we can adopt for Temple Terrace, maybe some of it, maybe all of it, because I think that this is an important thing that the county is trying to do, and make it consistent throughout the county, about how tenants are informed of their rights, and also that they cannot be discriminated against as a result of their income.
So, I can't answer for the whole council, but I can tell you, I think probably what the answer's gonna be to that is, I'd like to have a discussion about it, because I did get the ordinance, and I think we got something today from the city attorney that I didn't get a chance to read, but I have questions as a result of getting... When you sent the ordinance, I had some questions about that, because it did... I had some questions about enforcement of it, and I had some questions about what constitutes income discrimination. I did have some, and how this differed from the Florida law. I know, I think that's kind of what you sent us today that I didn't read yet. Personally, I'm not opposed to having a discussion about it. I don't know enough yet to know whether I'm in favor or not, because I think we need to have a discussion. There's no harm in us discussing.
The attorney for county, who goes to the Affordable Housing Board meetings, said that she was willing to come here and speak, and address our questions about it, because she was the one who drafted it and got it all together for them. So, if you'd like me to arrange that at an upcoming meeting...
Well, I was gonna say, we're gonna need to find a meeting where we'll have time.
Understood.
But I think putting that as an agenda item on a meeting where we're not already four hours in, but, yeah, I mean, you don't need my approval to put it on the agenda. Each of us can do that, but I'm certainly in favor of it. I would like to have the... I would like to have the question.
I'm in favor, but is this one of those, if we don't have any other competing ordinance that follow the counties?
Correct.
So, do we need to do anything?
No. I don't think so.
You don't, but I think it shows recognition that we are in agreement with the county, and that we'll make our...
As long as that's what it is, but I don't want to have to go through point after point on something we can't control.
No. No.
We discussed this a little bit before. You know, if we come up with anything, we have to have our own enforcement and our own notification system and our own Department of Rental, whatever you want to call it. But, you know, I mean, and to change this point, if we don't do anything, we follow the county, which is the same thing as...
Every other...
Everything else, exactly. We don't have our own separate rules and laws for every other...
Since we follow it, we're doing it.
Exactly. We are endorsing it.
Take on this?
Yes.
We're essentially endorsing it then.
So what is being asked of us?
That we also, apparently the county would like the cities to also have the same ordinance.
But if we have the ordinance, do we have to enforce it?
Yeah, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
That would be my question to the person from the county.
They want us to enact a city ordinance that mirrors theirs?
Correct, I think that's...
Oh, I don't, I mean, I don't think I would be...
They say that, we don't do that with anything else.
Be the enforcer, I forgot what it was.
If we enact an ordinance of our own, we do.
No, but we just, we just adopted it.
I think we need to find out and come back with it, come back to us.
All right, yeah. See what's being asked of us because if they're asking us to start our own, nah, we don't have, we're not doing that.
And when I talked to Tampa's attorneys, they said that they were looking into it. I haven't heard from them and I haven't followed up, so I don't know whether they ever adopted it or not.
The city's not responded to them either.
They said that it's in the process. I heard from Councilman Goode that they're working on it.
But our code enforcement does not need to take this on if that's what we're being...
No.
No, we don't need, I agree with you, we don't need another, we don't need another city bureaucracy if that's what's being asked of us, in my opinion.
Well, let's get more information.
Let's get more information, absolutely. Okay. Anything else? Go ahead. I think they're black, I'm not sure.
Oh, kidding, huh?
I think they're black. Ready for me to stop talking, Vice Mayor? Charles, we good? Anything else to come before council? If not, we are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a good council, thank you.
I'll be right back.